Welcome to the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency regular meeting of March 11th. Roll call, please. Councilmember Blatt?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Strobel?
Present.
And if Councilmember Clapp would lead us in the pledge?
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight, but you know, I think I'm gonna take this time and ask our police chief, Mr. What? Milkovich, to come forward and do some-
Fire chief.
Fire chief. Sorry, sorry.
Wow, Dave, I am getting promoted, but mayor and council, it's a bittersweet day for me, and that's because our fire district is reorganizing, and I'm being moved out of my position. I'm moving to our headquarters in a different role, so it's bittersweet. I want to thank you for your support, and it's really been a pleasure serving the city. Now for the happy side, you know, the sweet side of this is I have the distinct honor of introducing our new county deputy chief. This is the number two person, he falls right underneath Chief Mark Lorenzen. This is Chief Vaughn Miller. I'm gonna let him say a little something, and then I'm gonna introduce your new fire chief.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity. I'm Vaughn Miller, I'm assistant chief with the district right now, but in a couple weeks, I'm gonna get promoted to deputy chief, replacing deputy chief Michael Plant, who's retiring. I've spent thirty years with the district, and I've worked pretty much everywhere, including a couple years over here in Miners Oaks. I've risen through the ranks, and during that time, I've had several special assignments as a EMS chief, special operations coordinator, and then a strategic planning assignment that was a little bit too long, but I got it done, so it was good. Over the last eight years, I've been an executive, serving underneath Chief Roper, and now Chief Lorenzen, as chief of emergency services and planning and technology. Type-one incident commander, which is, I'm pretty proud of it, because it's a hard fought or hard-won rank within the firefighting world, so I'm excited about that, but I'm most excited about my new role as deputy fire chief. So, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and it's very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right.
We should do the clap thing, you know, like we're at a sports event. It's also my pleasure to introduce your new fire chief. Chief Norm Plot has been with the district about thirty-five years, he's actually a resident of Ojai, a homegrown son, and I'm gonna let Norm come up and say a few words as well.
Thanks, Chief Milkovich, and a mayor, members of the council. My name's Norm Plot, I went to Nordoff High School, elementary school, I'm definitely born and raised in Ojai. My father was a milkman at Royal Oaks Dairy, I can still remember on Persimmon Hill, that's how far back I go, cows actually being milked at the dairy, so it is true what they say about the milkman, 'cause my dad did meet my mother on the milk route that he's still married to, so. But it has been a pleasure, I've worked at all the valley fire stations during my tenure of the fire district. I started off as a cadet through the high school work experience program, and I'm married to my wife, Denon, who's an elementary school teacher at Miners Oaks, and I've been the EMS battalion chief in charge of all the medical emergency services in the county for the last five years. But my roots are here in the Ojai Valley, I've worked on a lot of the vegetation programs here in the valley over the years, close ties with all of our collateral agencies, with the Sheriff's Department, the US Forest Service, and CAL FIRE here in the valley. So, very familiar with operations, both at the county, state, and local level, so it's a pleasure, it'll be a pleasure being your fire chief, thank you.
Thank you.
And I swear I'm getting promoted, he's not just replaced me, 'cause he's better qualified. Anyways, thank you for the time, we just wanted to introduce and let you know those changes are happening. You will be well-served by both Norm and Vaughn, and I am still here as a resource to you as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, commission reports? Do we have any of our chairs here, our commission members?
Good evening, I'm Randy Haney.
Evening, Mr. Haney.
I'm with the Wreckin' Parks Commission. I'll be short. We've been working on the duties and responsibilities for the commission over the last couple months, and we've been working on the naming of the facilities, and we're, we've almost completed those. We are in the process of planning an open house at Sarozody Rec Center to show off all the new decor, and paint, and doors, and windows, and carpeting, and all of the good things that have come lately to the department. I'd like to give a big thank you to Steve McCleary and Sophocles, as usual, they're doing just incredible jobs, working with the commission as well as serving the residents here of Ojai. And, that's it. Pretty simple. Thank you.
Thanks.
Christine Golden, Arts Commission?
Yes, I just want to say hello and thank you for the opportunity. I'm gonna be speaking to you on two discussion items, so that's gonna be the Arts Commission report tonight, so I won't go into all that now, I'm gonna wait for the discussion items. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from our, any of our commissions would like to speak? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to public comment, and I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting, but any member of the public wishing to address the city council, we ask that you complete a speaker's card, limit your comments to three minutes, and I have, okay. One speaker, well, we just had Randy, did you want to speak again, Randy?
Yeah.
On public comment?
Yeah, I can do this quickly. Hello again. I think I missed the leaf blower ban discussion, and I can see it's not being held tonight, because the room's empty. And I know we're not gonna talk about the satellite dish thing, because this room would obviously be packed with that, too, so, you know, I did some research on this leaf blower thing, and I just wanted to make a couple comments regarding it. You know, I was a part of that, I spoke on behalf of the gardeners in the valley, I don't know, ten years ago, twelve years ago, when we, when we kinda rushed the first ban through, which I felt personally it was rushed through, and then I've had lately a couple more gardeners come to me and ask me to come and speak on their behalf, but I'm not gonna speak on their behalf, I'm gonna speak for me, because they may not like some of the things that I've handed you, and so it's just easier to say, this comes from me, and the research that I've done, and some of the things that I like to see enacted regarding this leaf blower ban issue. I've handed, I've given you a handout. In the handout, there's a model leaf blower ordinance, which I think would be beneficial for all of you to take a look at and read, and there's eight little line items, I'm not gonna read them all, I would exceed my three minutes, but I just think that there, it's a good ordinance, and it's, and it's well-written. The only thing that I would change in it is bringing the police department into a dispute regarding dust being blown in the air, or noise exceeding its limits. I just think there's a better way of doing it, and I just think any time that you bring law enforcement into an issue like that, it just, it elevates it, and I just don't think that we need to do that. So that's my personal feeling on law enforcement. I'd like to see the city of Ojai create a certification program, I'd like to see them implement it and then enforce it through the Public Works Department, so that's one of the things that I've suggested in here, and, and then if it reaches, you know, some point down the line, or if someone can't reconcile their differences, or it reaches a confrontation, then maybe you bring the police department into it. But at this level, I'd like to see it taken to where we train the gardeners in the city of Ojai, how to use a blower, when to use a blower, you know, I'd like to see the certification program developed, I'd offer my, myself to help develop that, if you guys would like that. I'd like to see the owners of any and all blowers that are used in the public to be trained, and to be certified, and to have to carry that certification with them. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to see all these individuals get a business license. Through the business license, through the certification, and through the training, I think that we're gonna eliminate a lot of the issues that we're having regarding noise and regarding this, this dust issue. I think the last thing I'd like to say here is have the Ojai City employees be the leaders in taking the certification and instituting the new leaf blower ordinance. In other words, most of the times, cities exempt their employees whenever they enact rules or laws like this, or, and I'd like to see the city follow the same example that we're gonna be requesting our gardeners and our citizens regarding leaf blowers. So, obviously, I'm not for banning them, I'm for keeping them, but I'm for keeping them under the guise of let's train people how to use them properly. I also gave you a handout, it's from the state of Arizona, it's in English and in Spanish, and on the last page is actually a steel, battery-packed, battery-operated leaf blower with a battery pack, and again, I'd like to see the city actually implement tools like that, so that we're demonstrating to everyone else that we can do it along with everyone else. Okay? That's all I have, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have a quick question for Randy. What's the decibels of the battery-packed electric?
Pardon me?
Do you know what the decibels are on the battery-packed electric?
Actually, I don't on this one, but they're gonna be under fifty.
Under fifty?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Midget, and I live in 182 South Preble Avenue, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and city of Ojai, I am delighted to be here tonight. I represent this evening as a member of the Rotary Club of Ojai West, but also as a community service emergency trained graduate, and I'm very proud of both of those titles, and we have had, as Rotary West, a long relationship with Ojai Valley Cert, from having members graduate, from sponsoring the DVD, People Like You, which I am very proud to say is shown on our Channel 10 access every Sunday morning for our citizens. We help with the, and support the OK Sign Drill every September. We've urged young and old through advertising to sign up for current classes, and our Cert, our Rotary Club of Ojai West is so proud of our Cert people. For the last seven years, the members of Ojai Valley Cert have steadily worked to increase awareness and expertise in disaster preparedness. They've encouraged over five hundred Cert training attendees, extended that education by offering certification in amateur ham operation and first cross, Red Cross first aid training. They are visible at many functions, including Ojai Day, and organize and conduct the annual OK Drill, held on every third Wednesday in September. So, I am here tonight to talk and bring our support one more step, and we are encouraging our community in an event at Rotary Park at the Y, Rotary Club of Ojai West, and the Ojai Valley Cert will have a community donation supply drop-off, April 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00. We need supplies to take care of our citizens, they'll be listed in Ojai Valley Cert later on in the Ojai Valley News, and possibly on the Access Channel 10 as well, which would be nice to help all of our citizens come pitch in, new, slightly used, and when they leave a donation, they get a hot dog. I mean, and it's not just any hot dog, it's a Brian Crawford hot dog, he's a wonderful chef in our club, so we are urging people to think about what they can bring to the table for this donation drop-off. It makes us all buy into what we need to support our responders and ourselves in a disaster, so thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Cert's kinda like the roof, isn't leaking when it's not raining, and I think we have a tendency to forget that when these kind of situations come along, that these people are trained, and all of a sudden, you realize how important they are, so I really encourage everyone to participate in this, and I went to a graduation once, and I was really impressed with the whole way that the operation is run, it's not, it's not an easy program to get through, and you really are well-trained when you finish, so I think it's really a valuable thing that everyone needs to realize and, and support in the valleys. Thank you for your help.
William Alrich?
I am here to comment in support of a initiative that I think will be presented to the council in due course regarding the implementation of a, and a facility of public comments on the city's website. City, there's an article regarding the city of Encinitas implementing this for a one-year trial period, and apparently eighty, at least eighty small cities in California are already using this system to obtain public comment. Now, in-person public comment such as this, as charming and intimate as it certainly appears to be, for purposes of the council acquiring all possible input from the citizens, is antiquated. The system broadened, this proposed system of an website that allows for public input broadens and makes more democratic the process of city governance. This may be called online civic engagement, and should not only be supported by the council, but if possible, implemented. Please note that the cost for this program, which are approximately nine thousand dollars for, per year for the city of Encinitas, which includes implementation, lowers the barriers to participate, and tends to bring forth moderate viewpoints. Safeguards against abuse can be implemented as a requirement, and this program can be easily paid in, by the city of Ojai, by more effective and assiduous implementation and collection of building and encroachment permit and inspection fees. Now, I will provide more details regarding overlooked and uncollected encroachment and building permit fees to each of you in writing, and at later date, but within the near term, certainly, because my recent investigation and inspection of some of the city's documents indicate that the city, as a matter of course, is leaving tens of thousands of dollars on the table, and the last time I checked, the city needs that. So, thank you very much.
That's all of the cards I have for public comment, is there anyone else that would like, Dale?
Thank you, Dale Hanson, I live in the city. I don't know where to start, I liked what, most of what Randy said, what Bill said, and also what Stephanie said, but regarding the leaf blowers, I really think that it's a good idea if we can keep police enforcement out of that issue, but if we're going to do that, I think that the homeowner should be ticketed, and not the gardener, because they're the ones that hire them, and I think that we'll get to the source of the matter a lot faster with that. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we're gonna move to our consent calendar, but before we have any motion or anything, Councilmember Severo Lara has asked to comment on H, which is a resolution affirming participation in the informal bid procedures pursuant to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason why I pulled this item is I understand the purpose of creating a resolution and the state controller asking us to do one in order for our ordinance to be current with their act. My only question, and if I could ask Mr. Grant to come up, is he's just giving us a, a quick background overview of the difference between it being, being a resolution and then us enacting an ordinance, because my understanding is if you enact a resolution every year, you're mandated to follow their standards, and by us doing the resolution in 2002, put us in a bind and made us enact those standards, and now we're, they're more stringent, and I just wanted more clarity on that, if I may, is my making sense?
Sure. I appreciate that. Yeah, going back, this ordinance was adopted in 2002, and this was the, it's got a lengthy title to it, I think, right, the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, something that we can refer to it as, as the act. So that's a state act which sets standards for informal bidding and some other cost accounting procedures. So, at 2002, I think there was an oversight, and they're saying that it should have been adopted by resolution, we adopted it by an ordinance, an ordinance is a stricter approach, but they would like to see a resolution to formalize it, even though at this later date, someone had highlighted it recently. So they said if we adopt the resolution, then we become part of the act on their official books up on, in Sacramento, at the state level. So, yeah, it is true that since that period of time, 2002, the upper, the limit to go to formal bidding was a hundred, a hundred thousand at that time, and now it's gone up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, substantial increase, and then it would be for, for the purchase order and negotiated procurement and so on, we could do it, the city's presently at twenty-five thousand, but the act has gone up to forty-five thousand, so those are higher levels. And so if we went through and modified our ordinance, or deleted certain portions of it strictly on the act, we could go to these higher limits, would have certain benefits for staff, and I think in general, though, we, I mean, on occasion, we might fall between that twenty-five and forty-five level, and we would have been able to do negotiated procurements and purchase orders, but it's not too common, and same thing for the upper limit for formal bidding. And so we, it's a step we certainly could take, but I think there's other guidelines in that ordinance which probably are worth keeping, and I think that's something the city manager and I've talked about, you know, there's other guidelines in there that are, I guess, for internal finance procedures within, within the city that would have you modify as well. So, it didn't seem like a huge obstacle right now for us to have these limits, and I think we're okay with them if the council is.
And I appreciate you, Mr. Grant, for clarifying that, and as of right now, as I understand, we've always abided to these standards of a hundred thousand and twenty-five thousand, it's just in the future, if, it would be good for me personally to know if it's, if there, if there's more benefits in the future of keeping it that standard, or we just adding extra work for staff, or it could be that now that these standards are set in our ordinance, we could just have the opportunity to look at more bids, so there's, I see there could be a pros in that approach, but I just thought it was interesting how we adopted an ordinance in 2002 instead of a resolution to just be current with the act, so, and I like your explanation, I appreciate it, but just, I don't know, it's something to note, that if we do need to go with state law, it's an opportunity, and instead of it just a receive and file in the consent calendar, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on, on item H? And Councilmember Severo, did you want item H pulled for a separate vote, or did you, do you have all your questions?
Yeah, I just had my answers question, he answered my question, so that was it.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull A for discussion.
Okay, and you want it pulled for a separate vote?
Separate vote as well, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, well, with the-
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve items B through, would that be H and item two? Is that correct?
Just H.
Just H?
Yeah.
Okay, just B through H. Okay. For approval?
Second.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, sure. Madam Mayor, item I is the zoning ordinance amendments to implement the 2014-2027 housing element, and I would like to draw attention to page 1-53, under environmental review, and as part of the 2014-2021 housing element update process and addendum, blah, 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 was prepared to assess the potential consequences of adopting the programs outlined in the 2014-2021 housing element plan. The addendum concluded that the 2014 to 2021 housing element would not result in any new significant environmental impacts, this is the 327 housing unit, and that were not previously evaluated in the prior EIR. I just wanted to draw that to people's attention, that the EIR says that there would be no environmental impacts if we implemented the housing element. That's all I wanted to say, thank you. And I will now move, no, I'm not gonna move, I'm sorry.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion on item A?
I move to approve item I.
I said A, I'm sorry, I meant I.
One I.
I'll second that.
Let's have a roll call, please. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, and I would like to reorganize the agenda a little bit. Item two is Arts Commission appointments, but we also have an item five, which is residency requirements for membership on city commissions, and so I would like to move the discussion on two until after we have discussed five, because it may, there may be an impact. And so I'd like us to go to item three, regarding directly elected mayor. Thank you. Good idea. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The council requested that we schedule a discussion of the concept of a directly elected mayor, and so this report goes into the background of how government is structured in the state of California, and what options are available to you. Our, our government is structured by the government code and by the constitution of the state of California, and under those provisions, the city of Ojai is a general law city, and so as a general law city, we have the options that are made available through the government code as far as the structure of the city council is concerned. If you take no other action, the mayor position is a position that's selected from among the council members, and can be done on a rotating basis, as we have traditionally done it here in Ojai. However, there is a provision in the government code that allows you, by your action, or the citizens by petition, to put a measure on the ballot to have a directly elected mayor, and to determine whether the term of that mayor would be a two-year term or a four-year term. If the voters were to approve, then the mayor would be elected directly for whatever term they select, and the council members would be elected as they are right now. The role of the mayor would be almost exactly the same as it is right now, so as far as administration of the government, there would be no change, the, but the directly elected governor, mayor would be the chair of the city council at all times, there would be no rotation. The state constitution also provides for the creation of city charters. We are not a charter city, but there's, you could choose to go down the path of being a charter city. If you wanted to be a charter city, you'd have to draft a charter, or form a charter commission to prepare a proposed charter, and that would have to go to the electorate and be approved by the electorate. Under the charter form of government, there's actually a little bit more flexibility as to how you organize the mayor's position, and you could include a directly elected mayor as part of a charter city. In almost all of the cities in the state of California, the, the mayor is still part of the legislative part of the organization, and there's a city manager, city administrator, or town manager that's, that does the executive functions. So those are, those are the main items that sort of frame your discussion, and this is really meant for council discussion, so unless there's any questions, that concludes my report. So unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor, if I may. So what I'm hearing is that there's really only two options, um, from the staff report where we could, uh, elect a mayor being a two-year and a four-year? Under general law?
That's correct. That's, that's set by the, um, government code.
So is, is there any way of, of doing a, because I've done some research on, on, online of, of giving the mayor a little bit more responsibility? Have you found that in, under a general law?
Not under a general law. Uh, under general law, the mayor's duties are essentially the same, whether it's rotated or directly elected. Um, the only way to change the duties of the mayor would be to, uh, become a charter city.
And that's the only way? Cause I, in, in, according to some of the, uh, research I did, if you choose to provide a, uh, a ballot with the change of, I guess, a salary in the, in the mayor's position, you're able to give him a little bit more, um, bonus for being more involved in the community. It's, is that, but that has to be from a resolution?
Yeah, I, I, in, in, in terms of powers, I was thinking in terms of, of the powers of the office. I, I do think there's a separate provision for the pay of the mayor.
So, so in other words, it's not really what they're doing. It, it could be potentially expanded if there's other provision that are accepted.
The, um, the, the mayor's duties, um, as set out in the government code, we, for a directly elected mayor, are exactly the same as the duties of a mayor that's rotated. But I think you're correct. I think that the salary can be different.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protim Smith?
I, I, this is an interesting continuing education discussion. I'm not sure how it got on the, uh, agenda. I certainly, in fact, I said that, putting it on the agenda, I said quite clearly, that's absurd. I think we do not have a broken system. We have a perfectly logical system for the size of our city. Um, I don't know, uh, Councilman Lara, if he heard from three or four or ten, uh, city residents about changing it, but I would be more interested in what it is they try, they want to correct. I mean, I, I have been mayor twice. I make five hundred dollars a month. Uh, same as a councilman, what are you gonna do, pay me seven hundred a month? I'm still a professor of nursing, that's what I do. Everyone on this council has day jobs. We do it as elected volunteers. We're not looking at having a strong mayor, not only a strong mayor, but also take some of the city management role, who would make their living being the manager, city manager. So I'm not sure really what, what Councilman Lara had in mind bringing this up. I mean, I read, you know, all this stuff was available. So tell me, Councilman Lara, why did you bring it up?
Mayor Protim Smith, I requested this be placed on the agenda for discussion so we could do exactly that.
Of continuing education, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Anyone?
Yes, I'd like some clarification from the city manager. You said with this, with the, either the strong mayor in the charter city or the, what's the other one called? I'm so sorry. The general law, you said the mayor's duties are the same, correct?
No, in, in the, in the general law city, um, whether it's elected or, um, rotated, it's the same. In a charter city, you have more flexibility to, um, design the duties of the mayor. So it can be slightly different.
Okay. And in your staff report, you say the exceptions are LA and San Diego that have directly elected mayors. And that there's seven of the smaller cities in California that have directly elected mayors. What, do you know what those seven small cities are?
Um, I, I think what I said is that there are seven cities that do not have a city manager or a city administrator. And tho, those were cities, I think one of them was about two thousand in population. The others were like five or six hundred in, in population.
Uh-huh. And, um, so the duties of the mayor of Los Angeles, does he run the day-to-day operations of the city? Or does he have a city manager?
The, the mayor of Los Angeles, the, Los Angeles is a charter city. And, and the mayor is like the president. And the, and the city council is like the Congress. So the, the mayor's the head of the executive branch and the, um, city council is the legislative branch.
So this is, does the, the mayor of LA give direct, uh, direction to the planning department or the public works department?
Um, I believe he does, yes.
Okay.
And he has appointment authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Blatt, did you have a question?
Uh, I don't really have a question. I just don't understand Councilwoman Smith's comments that this is continuing education. I'm not sure what that means. We're here to discuss, we're here to discuss whether this is an option that we may want to consider. And I don't consider it continuing education, I consider it a discussion item.
I consider it something that was easily available in the literature that every councilman had as orientation when we came on. And it's, i, if you read it, it's very clear to me that what we are doing is not only the norm, but the most cost-effective. We have a volunteer elected council. We all have day jobs, period. We're not going to become a strong ma, mayor and run the city. That's out of the question.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to comment, cause I think we may have, uh, gotten just a bit twisted and, and where I thought this was, uh, headed. And that is, I actually, when I asked it to be placed on the agenda, my idea was actually whether or not this question should be placed on the November ballot through a council initiative or through, uh, the, a public initiative.
And Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I, I think it's really important to answer a question that council member, or Mayor Protim, uh, Smith asked because I think it's, it's why. And I think that when we do any decision, it doesn't matter what it is in a government structure or in a private business, it's, that's an important question to answer. And I feel, and this is me personally, that I think that continuity and, um, a way to directly connect from a council, a mayor to the public is beneficial. Whether it be two years or four years, I, I prefer it being four years. But I think that i, in the business, and I think that the city's also a business, is the business of hearing the public and implementing the policies that benefit our community, that there should be some accountability and some continuity. And there should be some structure that is more definitive. Uh, that's what I believe. I don't, I don't want to say that in the past, other council members or mayors did the wrong thing. No, I, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying is that what I, I think the, a better system of government that we could be more, more held accountable and, and participate more in, in the city, uh, level is this option. And I, I appreciate you putting it out there. And I think that there's no, uh, uh, there's no harm in asking the public, okay, do you want a strong elected mayor or are you fine the way it is right now? And I think there's no harm in asking our public to vote on that. And that's, that, that's my position and, and that's what I.
Madam Mayor?
I'd, I'd like to make a comment first. You, you mentioned a, a strong elected mayor?
Under general law. Under general, not under, not under charter, no. I, not under charter. We're not talking about charter. I'm talking about general law, what you can do under general law. So I, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, that's my clarification, is what we mean by what kind of strong mayor, what the duties of the mayor would be. So you're saying that you're thinking under a general law that we already have. We have a strong mayor being a mayor with no more powers than any other council member, but just presides over the meetings for a two or four-year period instead. Okay. I understand.
And then being, yeah, and then being elected for either those two or four years, so.
Any other questions from council for staff? I do have one speaker card. Bill Wirick.
Bill Wirick, six oh seven, uh, North Blanch, speaking as an individual citizen only. Um, I want to, um, I appreciate the, the, the staff report on this issue of general law versus charter. And I'm only speaking about general law as well. Um, however, uh, as I read the, uh, general law and I reviewed two, uh, tur, uh, city attorney reviews for the cities of Elk Grove and Antioch, which are posted on the web, that had elections for an elected mayor under general law. Both of them stated that in fact, there are some specific differences between the way we do things now and having an elected mayor on, into a, uh, manager for, a, a council manager form of government. And I'm reading from one of those, uh, attorney opinions, uh, in Elk Grove. Uh, the elected ga, mayor, of course, is a member of the city council. However, they, having the, the ability to, to be the designated by election chair of the council is different, uh, from, um, being elected. Also, uh, the, um, the point is, is that you can, under general law, according to this attorney, the mayor has the power to appoint that, uh, members of boards, committees, and commissions, subject to the approval of the council. So there are, uh, the, the elected mayor would also have the ability to control and, and reflect the will of the people in terms of how agendas are handled, uh, how they're formulated and how the city council meetings are run. So when you look at the ability for, uh, under general law, not, you know, it depends upon whether council allows this, I believe. But the council, uh, the, the appointment power is different. Um, it's inherent in the, in the elected mayor. The, it's inherent in setting, uh, agendas and not having, you know, having agendas run by the elected mayor rather than, um, sort of, you know, halfway by staff. And also, uh, the idea of, of just representing the idea that, um, under, under general law, you're self-limiting the power of that position. So you're not dealing with an abuse of power situation. I like that. I was wondering how I felt about this. But then when I saw Mr. Clark's review of how the inherent power is limited, uh, by general law and how there are some specific ways in which that appealing to the overall will of the people can be expressed in significant ways in terms of how council is run and how appointments are made, um, makes me feel like, uh, it probably is worthwhile thinking about, uh, being a, uh, you know, to the vote, vote of the people. So I want to take some issue with you, Mr. Clark. I think there are some, some differences, uh, in terms of, of how we're doing it now that the elected mayor could have some, some, um, small but still, still significant differences based on what I saw in Elk Grove and, and Antioch. So, um, I have more to say, but I'm out of time. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Smith, did you have a?
Well, I, I, I have go back of the city eleven years. And I definitely remember when councilma, uh, count, mayor would appoint people to, let's say, planning commission without any input from the council or from the commissioners or the head of the planning commission. We have now moved to an, uh, and nobody was in on the interviews. Uh, we have now moved to a, uh, a procedure where, for example, Mayor, uh, Strobel invited me to be on the interview, uh, committee plus the head of the arts commission. The meeting was held in the open. Anyone could attend, including any of the, uh, people who were applying. It was open and transparent. And I, I thought for the applicant, it was a little, you know, odd because you're being interviewed for a quote job and other applicants in the same room. But I think what you're, uh, the last speaker just, uh, was suggesting that we go back to the old way. And, um, to me, that's not a pro at all.
Real quickly?
Councilmember Clapp?
Yes, um, the two, the two, um, duties or powers of the elected mayor in the general law city of setting the agenda and appointment process are the way the city's done it for years.
Subject confirmation.
The, uh, the, the mayor always participates, participates in the agenda in this city. And second of all, yes, that in the past, the, the mayor was very directly involved with the appointment process. And we have worked very hard to have it be a more diverse group appointing rather than it have it become more, uh, a closed-door process, which it was in the past, where the mayor, for one year, had pretty much the sole power to, to appoint to commissions. Where now we have turned it into a more open process where it isn't behind closed doors and it also isn't pretty much done by one person. The planning commission or the, uh, the commissioner, the head, the head of each commission is now participating as well as a, uh, rotation of another council member as well. So we've actually opened up rather than closed down and created a more open rather than more of a good old boy network sort of approach in, uh, how we've chosen to, as a, as a council to, to govern. So, but it is, I suppose, you know, it is truly the, uh, the choice of the people. And if they want to go back to that method where, where, um, they want to have it done that way again, it's, it's certainly, uh, within the rights of the electorate to do so.
And I think I'd like to clarify something. Uh, in the past, when quote, the mayor did the interviews, the mayor did not have the authority to make an appointment to a commission. The mayor had the, the only authority the mayor had was to make a recommendation.
Right, that's true.
And so there's a difference there. Uh, any other questions from? Oh, we were out in the public, weren't we? Sorry. Okay, uh, Bill Urick, Ulrich?
William Ulrich, four eight seven Gridley Road. Um, I applaud your support of and movement towards transparency. My question is, why does it take so long if you have such a great, long view of history? Number two, um, and this is directed at Ms. Smith, I take exception to your stride in opposition to open discussion of legitimate issues and the suppressing effect thereof, your comments. To be clear, this initiative, if implemented, if goes forth, would involve empowering the mayor. Since I've been here numerous times and the council has stated numerous times, that's not our responsibility. We're powerless. We can't, we don't control that. And they usually move, view to the right to either the city manager or the city attorney and defer in that direction. The concept here is having someone who's accountable, who will be responsible, who's named as such and elected as such, which we do not have at the present. We have a lot of plausible deniability in a system that supports it. Having said that, uh, it should be a matter for the electorate to consider and not be quashed, ab initio, here in a council meeting, just because somebody doesn't like it. Thank you.
And I would like to respond to that. Uh, nothing is being quashed. The question that this council is considering is whether or not, uh, the question of an elected mayor should be placed on the November ballot as a council initiative or a public initiative. Even if this council decides not to instruct staff to prepare an initiative for the November ballot, that in no way, uh, impedes your right as the public to create an initiative on your own.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
There are many things that are outside of our jurisdiction. And quite often when we turn to the city manager or the city attorney, it's usually matters that we do not have jurisdiction. For example, the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, we have no power over. We are not able to, um, to make, um, legal decisions in matters we have no power over. Well, I don't think that any of us are, um, shirking our responsibilities or, um, are weak enough individuals that we are not, that we are going to acquiesce to staff's commands. I don't think any of us are those types of personalities up here. I think we take our decisions very seriously. When we turn to staff or the city attorney, it's usually to educate ourselves about a matter so that we can vote in an educated manner. But we are not by any means taking direction from staff nor from the city attorney. We give staff direction. They don't give us direction.
Bob Daddy? Oops, sorry.
Madam Mayor, um, Mr. Daddy, if you could just bear with me one minute, I've got a question for, for Mr. Clark. Uh, Simi Valley has a directed, has a directly elected mayor. And that mayor, um, is not a council member necessarily. They, they sit on the council, but they don't, it doesn't necessarily come from the council. So the mayor, if the mayor runs for mayor and loses, that doesn't mean that he's also running or she's running for city council. Do you have any information on, on that?
I, I'm not familiar with, uh, with Simi Valley's approach, but, but as a general.
But as a general law city, if we have a directly elected mayor, you would choose to run as mayor. And you'd either be elected or not elected as mayor. And if, and if not, you would not be on the city council.
Okay.
And I have worked under that system before.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Daddy?
I guess the real question is, is are you going to allow or deny the citizens the chance to make an upper-down choice? That's it. Not what you want, it's what we want. So the question is, is will you put it on the ballot? Entrust us that we know what to do and how to do it, and we know best. Excuse me, and that we're prudent and we can make up our own mind. Seems almost like I'm hearing a lot of things that we're doing a lot of things, and that's not the question at all. Will you put it on the ballot or will an initiative be brought forth in a special election at a different time that won't make this November's ballot? That's really only, the only question that I see. I mean, I applaud their, their input, and they have different point. But the point is, is we're going to have this election. You can help us and put it on this November, or we'll go out and we'll get the people and we'll get the initiative process. I think we've demonstrated that we can do that easily enough. And we'll have a special election, and we'll get this thing done one way or the other. So I would hope you would give us your cooperation. Order staff to do this, put this on the November election, and don't deny the people the opportunity to say no. Not yes, no. Trust us for a change, because we all put you there. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just in a comment for that. How does it, how does it work, if you know, Mr. Clark? For instance, there's three openings coming up this fall for the, for the council. If there's an initiative on the ballot, and let's say that the initiative passes, how does the, how, and the initiative is to have a directly elected mayor, how do you elect a mayor after the election?
Again, Madam Mayor, I believe the process would be, actually, it wouldn't be effective until the next election. I think, now, we could, if you want to go that, we can explore more. But I believe the norm of the process is, is that at the next election, then, there would be an election for mayor.
Kristine Golden?
Okay, well, I didn't know I was going to speak on this. I'm speaking here just as a citizen. I live in the city. One thing that comes up for me is that I didn't hear anything that indicated that having a mayor, an elected mayor, would preclude that mayor inviting the chair of a commission and another council member or more in the interview process for commission members. So I don't know how that got into the discussion like it's got to be just the mayor making that decision if we have an elected mayor. So that's not clear to me. But what I really, was I sat here, and I'm not part of the behind-the-scenes group that have brought this to the table. I haven't, Mayor Strobel, talked to any commissioners about, or any city council members about this issue. But as I sat and listened, what occurred to me was my administrative experience as a principal. And one thing I know is that when you have turnover of the leader, it's, it causes all kinds of reverberations within the organization. There's a lack of continuity. Even though the goals of the school were the same, even though the rules and the regulations and all the day-to-day things we did were the same, there is a new person now that everybody has to learn how that person works, what that person's expectations are. And you can fill in the blanks from there. It goes on and on and on. So if you do consider this, I would suggest to all of you that you think about it perhaps in that way. Would it be helpful to have some continuity for staff as well as for the public? Because you kind of get to know who you're dealing with and how things work that way. So just offer that to you, because it just came to mind as I was listening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Randy Haney?
Randy Haney, 513 Pleasant Avenue. I just, something real simple. We vote you in. You fail to do your job, we vote you out. Thank you.
Anyone else from the, Dale?
I agree so much with what Councilwoman Laura was saying earlier. I really think that we need to have a mayor to run the city, a salaried, full-time job to run the city. It's nothing against any of you. I just think that it's time that, is that, I don't know, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that's how I see it. No, he didn't say exactly that. I realize that. But I really hope that you give us the opportunity to vote on this, whether it's a two-year or four-year, I prefer the four-year. And I hope that we have the chance to vote on it with your allowing it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to mention again that I think the question before the council is whether or not the question of an elected mayor be put on a November ballot by an initiative of the city council or by an initiative, a public initiative. I also want to comment that, you know, sometimes we think we have an idea of what we want. And so, if, if, if your idea of an elected mayor is someone who is elected and immediately begins to administer the city, your thinking is in error. So, when we say elected mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that our citizens are aware of exactly what that means, because that is all that's being asked of us. Should the position of mayor be elected? Not the powers and duties. Any other comments?
I have a question in the staff report. Page 3-1, bottom of the page. It says, "In a general law city, the position of mayor is selected by the city council." My question is, is that by Government Code Section 34900-34906? Is that like the way it is in Cast in Stone?
It's, yes. The Government Code says that if you don't have a directly elected mayor, that the default position is that you choose a mayor from among your members.
And the, the next page, 3-2, is the mayor does not have special executive powers. Whether the mayor is directly elected or not directly elected in a general law city, is that the case?
That is the case, yes.
Okay. And... So the city council may send an election to establish a directly elected mayor and set the term of two or four years. That would be the only thing that would go on the ballot. Rather than the city council electing a mayor, either for one year or two or three or four, the citizens would, when they vote for council, I suppose, they would then make that decision, correct?
That's correct.
And would the city, would the council be able to directly change the government, the appointment process to be either a two- or four-year term?
That's a question that you need to put to the voters.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lara?
Madam Mayor, well, thank you. I appreciate it. And I guess what I was getting at with the resolution of potentially paying the mayor a little bit more, I understand the question right now is, do we want to put on the ballot whether we want to elect two to four-year? I understand that. Beyond that, I think that there's mechanisms that we could do if we choose to give a little bit more power to the mayor. There's mechanisms out under the general law that you could possibly have them elect commissioners or have them get paid a little bit more. I mean, that's, that's, we're not talking about that right now. We're simply just talking about two to four-year elected mayor. And my whole thing was, again, adding continuity. And I would like that to be put on the ballot so that our citizens could really have that opportunity to do so. And I think there is a, there is a clear difference when you have a mayor four years to one year. And, and I think that we're all here capable of being a mayor. And why not just put it out to the people to really decide whether to be two or four-year? I mean, that, that to me is, is if we're trying to be really transparent and we're trying to really open it up, I think that really adds a different level of talking to the community and saying, okay, look and see if you want a two- to four-year or if you just want to keep it the same. And, and we've, and talking about the money and stuff, I think that is irrelevant for the issues that we paid a lot more money with consultants, et cetera, and the list goes on. So I think this is a well-worth thing and investing. And I think we should really put it up to the voters to decide that.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
I've been mayor twice. I'm Mayor Pro Tim now. We have a rotational mayorship. The mayor has no more power but to run the meeting. We have extremely democratic and open process with, with electing, not electing, but choosing commissioners, much more so than when I arrived. I'm very happy with that. I do not want a two- or four-year mayor to decide whether they wish to invite other people on the council to participate and if they wish to invite the chair of whatever commission they are appointing to. And that's what you're suggesting. I also see that we're elected for four years. So we would have potentially, you'd have to be selected either a mayor for two or four years. Either you'd have to come on at the beginning, so you could have a brand-new person has never gone to a council meeting, and then they're taking on the role of mayor. The way we have it now is rotational. So at least you'll have two or even three or four years and then be mayor at your second election, where you have to be re-elected before your mayor, which is what happened to me, unless somebody steps down. I know the first two years I was in council was a huge learning experience. To have taken on the role of running the meetings would have been added to me and added to my stress level. I, again, I don't think the system is broken. Why are we trying to fix a system that is not broken?
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, if I may just respond?
Councilmember Laura?
Madam, I know I'm being... I just want to assure the public to know that my personally, I think that we have a smart enough resident, uh, community to elect a mayor that knows how city, city government works. And, and I think that we shouldn't even think that our citizens are going to vote in somebody that is incompetent and that goes against our morals. And then again, we get to, if, if that is the case, there's a mechanism out there to take him out of office. So I really don't think that's a valid point. I just think that we should really think, and it's not about, it's about, to me, it's about more being more transparent and improving, being more efficient, accountable. To me, that, that's what, that drives me. And being on council this year, in what, four or five months, I think that we could do better. And I think that we could offer the community better. I personally do. And that's why I think this would be a great way to improve our government system, but...
Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of comments. I see some real benefit to having an elected mayor, only from the standpoint of continuity and accountability. But with that being said, it really isn't up to me whether we have an elected mayor or not. I am in favor of asking staff to put it on the ballot and letting the people decide.
Any other comments from staff? We have no more speaker cards. Anyone else from the public wish to address this item?
I will make one comment, and that is, I agree that I would like to see this council place the question on the ballot for the electorate to decide. I also want to make sure that the public is not misled into thinking that an elected mayor is going to run the city. So, that's where I am. As far as personally, I think the system we have now works well. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, that's my main concern, is that people will think that they're electing, electing somebody who's going to run the city. And so, if it's to go on the ballot, I think it's really important that it be clearly written so that people aren't led to believe that that's what's happening. I don't really quite understand the benefit of, of, I mean, I'm glad it wouldn't be a special election, which would cost the city $30,000. I would never really want to, you know, agree to that. It really doesn't change much. So, let the people decide. But I think it needs to be written a real, clear way that they understand that it is not going to be a position that is going to be somebody that's going to be running the city.
Madam Mayor?
For example, I mean, here I am, a professor of nursing, a tenured professor, and I'm saying, "I'm going to run for the mayor of Ojai for two or four years," right? "I'm going to take a job that's going to pay me $700, that I'm going to work full-time at." That's what the public is going to think. Give up my tenured professorship? Give me a break. How is that possibly going to be anyone interested in that kind of job? So you have to make it extremely clear to the, to the public that you're looking at someone who has a day job. That's how they earn their living. They are just running to be the mayor because they love the city. And they're willing to be mayor for two to four years so that the same person sits in the seat where Colin Strobel is. If the public understands that, fine, let's put it on the ballot. But I think the chance for the public not to understand that is huge.
Madam Mayor, I give the public a little more credit than that.
Okay. Would anyone, Mr. Clark?
So, if the, if the city council wants to proceed along the lines of placing the measure on the ballot, there's a number of resolutions that you'd have to approve. So the appropriate direction to give us would be to direct us to prepare those resolutions. And, and then we'd bring it back, and the decision to put it on the ballot would actually be part of the vote on those resolutions.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, I think you should have a motion on this.
Anyone?
I move to approve putting the elected mayor position on the November ballot 2014.
So let me suggest, I think what you, what you want to do is move to direct staff to prepare the resolutions and bring them back to the city council.
I move to, for the staff to prepare the resolutions for electing the mayor position. And bring back.
Second?
Rule call? Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. Okay. Moving on. Forgotten where I am.
Item four.
Item four is a joint, is the issue is a joint concept review procedure. Mr. Clark?
Several weeks ago, we had, we scheduled a joint meeting of the city council and the Planning Commission to hear a concept review, which is, a concept review is a non-binding feedback mechanism for applicants that are bringing projects before either one of those two boards. And there were a number of people who were concerned that that joint approach was not appropriate or that if such a meeting was to be held, it should be something that they should have an opportunity to have input on before a decision was made to hold it. And so, the council directed us to bring this question back to the city council for review. Our recommendation is that if, in the future, we receive a request for a joint concept review, that we bring that request to the city council. And then you decide whether the review would be a joint review or whether they'd have to approach both bodies independently.
Any questions from council members to staff?
I just have one question. Mr. Clark, the, I'm very familiar with the idea of concept review, having been on the Planning Commission for as long as I was. And I thought there was some confusion over... And I thought there was some confusion over what the role of the council was at the concept review when we had it on the gables, and I think that was just lack of education of the council. Um, but, concept reviews cost money. They generally come at a very early stage in the, in the, uh, review process. And ultimately, a project may end up in front of the council after it's been through whatever process it's been at the planning commission. And I think it gives the applicant far better insight to know that they're not going to be turned down if they were to appeal something to the council after having a concept review. So I'm not, it, I think it should be the applicant's choice as to whether or not they want a concept review in front of the planning commission alone, or have it in front of the council together. Uh, why would we say, no, we don't want to hear it? I mean, what, what authority do we have to say? No, we're not going to tell you what we think about your project before you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars designing it. It seems like we ought to give them a choice. Do you want to take it for a concept review before the planning commission, or do you want it to be a joint review? And let them decide.
Any other questions, comments from council? Mayor Protem Smith?
Uh, that's very interesting, uh, Councilman Blatt. I saw that, I didn't see that point. What I saw was perhaps the opposite, that somehow, the, the fact that, let's say, the city council was there at the concept review, the planning commission's there, they gave them lots of questions, they told them what they need to do to, to change it or revise it. I mean, I'm not a planner, I'm not an architect, or a landscaper, any of those, but I'm sitting on the council, and this applicant is looking at me, and he thinks that by my expression or something I say, that I think this is a great project. So it goes to planning. Planning commission said, well, you've made some changes, but we still want to see this and see that, and this and that, and they tell them to bring back the plan with their changes. But they say, no, I'm going to appeal that, I'm going to go right to the council, because I know that Carol Smith gave me a look like she really likes this project. So that's the opposite of what you're saying. I mean, in a sense, me being there may influence them to think that they have a project that's going to fly by the council, so never mind what our planners say. So, um, I would, I wouldn't be against what you say, but I want the planning commission to take the lead role, and the council does not really indicate, wow, I think this is a great project, don't worry about it, come to us and we will take it. I, I think that could really sabotage our, our planners.
Madam Mayor? I think there's, I think there's some problems when something does come in appeal, if we haven't been paying, you know, watching all the meetings, because a lot of discussion can come from the planning commission that really makes, that clarifies things that we would have the benefit of. So sometimes when things come on appeal to us, we're woefully ill-educated. So there's, we're ill-educated to make a decision, because we haven't been involved in that process of explaining the laws and the thinking process of the planning commissioners, so we really are kind of lacking in kind of a foundation to make that decision. I guess you could say that if it's going to come before appeal, you really should review the planning commission meeting, so you educate yourself. I suppose you could request council members do that, of course, you couldn't make them. So that is a, you know, that is a way to maybe get by that, but that is one of the argument for the joint meeting, is so that there isn't that miscommunication. But you make a good point, too. It kind of muddies the waters. It is, it's problematic.
Well, keep in mind, an appeal comes to us de novo. Uh, we are, we don't have to pay any attention to what happened at the planning commission. It comes to us generally new, but it would seem to me that it would be an excellent thing for the applicant to know, at least at the very initial stages, whether or not they feel like the council is going to be amenable to what their project is. I'm just thinking of a project that, that perhaps they would think that the planning commission were to deny it, and they'd think, boy, the council's going to approve this, we're going to appeal it, and it comes to us, and we deny it as well. Whereas if we were at the planning stages early, at the, particularly the concept review, I think they'd have an idea of what we felt about the project.
Yeah, I understand it's supposed to come de novo, but I think it's up to you, as a council member, to educate yourself about what's already occurred. I mean, just as anyone would do if they were to take on a case in appeal, you're going to educate yourself.
But this really isn't an appeal. It's a, it's.
Sure is.
No, it's, it's not an appeal from a decision that's been made. It's the project coming before us, just as though we were the first people to see it.
Well, we better get a really good.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
We better get a really good staff report then.
Correct me if I'm, if I'm, uh, wrong, Mr. Blatt.
Better get a really good staff.
And that's correct. It's, it's, I mean, it's, and, and it's also important, I was going to say, that, that whatever goes in, as we do the training on this, is whatever goes into your thinking regarding approval or denial has to be based on the evidence that was submitted at the hearing, not something you saw on TV before, or a conversation outside the hearing room. So.
At the planning commission hearing, which is why it's so, no?
Technically, no, no, that, that, that's, it's, once the matter's appealed by either side to the city council, it's as if, from a legal standpoint and from a administrative record standpoint, as if it's a fresh case. So you have the free, you have the full discretion to approve or deny, and, and it is important that, that whatever your, your individual rationale is, or the body's rationale is for approval or for action, it's reflected upon evidence that it was submitted at the hearing. And to the extent you, as we always teach planning commissioners, if they drive by the property and look at it, or they talk to somebody, they must put on the record what they did, who they talked to, and what information they got. So, yes, I mean, you should be fully briefed on the project, be fully aware of what's going on, but you're not really considering whether the planning commission was right or wrong. It's a fresh hearing before the city council.
Gotcha.
And clarification a little bit. A concept review, there really is no acceptance or denial of a concept review. It is simply input, and let's say it's a joint meeting. It's input from planning commissioners and from council members.
It's not an appeal, we're just talking about the concept review. There, there's a real, definitely difference there, yeah.
Let me finish. So here's my question. If the planning commission and the city council sit for a concept review, that concept then goes to the planning commission as for approval of or denial of a project? And let's say the planning commission denies it. What have, have we weakened our position if we then hear the appeal from the planning commission on a project where we sat on a, a concept review?
I, I don't think so, so long as we are making it clear at this concept review that it's almost a pre-filing process. And I assume when, when the planning commission does, does concept reviews, they do it on a regular basis, to make clear to the applicant, this is not a consideration of your project, this is getting feedback on your application. The assumption being that the applicant is going to revise their project, to some degree that they get, you know, some sort of negative feedback. And we're always assuming that that's, that then goes back, and then a formal application is submitted, and that's what the decision is. I, I think, I think in the hearing, I mean, you, you, just as I said, you would avoid statements like, boy, if you ever submitted that to me, no matter what you did, I'd never vote for that, yet probably not things you'd want to be saying. Um, but, because it's really, it, it's a feedback process, as long as it's very informal, and we make it clear to the applicant that this is not a decision, this is, this is feedback, I think from due process standpoint, you're fine.
Many times, we would have concept reviews, and, um, lengthy concept reviews, and never see the project ever again. Uh, they were never submitted for a formal permitting process, and nothing that's set it at a concept review is binding. If you say, you know, you don't like it, that doesn't mean you can't come back and say you do like it. It's just, it's an informal process for an applicant to get some feedback, so that they don't spend a lot of money, and do a lot of effort, and then find out that it's not going to be approved. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, I totally support that. I don't want them spending their money, you know.
Madam Mayor, if I may? I, I went into that meeting thinking the same thing, it was a concept review. And I think it is an option that we should give whoever it is, an applicant, if they want input, and, and given the opportunity to ask before they spend a lot of money. So that, that was my impression going into it. I didn't think we were going to come out saying, oh, we do agree or we don't agree, and this is our input as a council, because it, it was, it could potentially have a big impact in our community, and I think that they should know what information, or where, where we're coming from. So I, I, I thought that a concept review in that, in that form was, was appropriate.
Any other, well, I have, I have, um, I just want to remind us that the, Mr. Clark's recommendation is to place requests for joint planning commission, city council, concept reviews on a city council agenda to determine if and/or when a joint review will be scheduled. So I just wanted to make sure that we remember what it is that, that we're, and I have one speaker card. Any other questions from council for staff? And I saw you, Mr. Iker. Bill Warwick?
Um, yeah, Bill Warwick speaking, private citizen only, 607 North Blanch. I, I really like what, uh, Councilman Blatt had to say, because time is money for people with a project. And, uh, you know, I think having the option of saying, all right, you think it's, you know, a, a more efficient way to get a joint review, or to keep it in planning commission, is something that you, you, you probably want to leave that initiative with the applicant. And I, the, the only concern I have, slight concern with, we're putting it into a bureaucratic formality of having to put it on agenda, is that delays things. And, I mean, that's at least a month, and time is money for these developers. And I think, you know, that it shouldn't necessarily be that formal. Um, that's, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Mr. Iker?
I remember when, uh, David Burry spoke about the planning commission and why things were coming back to the council after being heard by the planning commission, and he said, we appoint these people to do a job for us. And as I read what is here on the agenda tonight, it doesn't say anything about an appeal, it's just a concept review. And it's my understanding that you all choose the people to be on the planning commission based on not only their knowledge, but their abilities to make a decision. And if you're not going to allow them to make the decision, why have them at all? And that's pretty much what David Burry said. We put these people out there to take the job and to take the onus off of the city council. It is a concept review, as, as Paul Blatt said, and so you can change your mind if someone comes back. But why have both bodies sitting if you're appointing one to make the decision for the other?
Mr. Miley?
Uh, Bill Miley, North Signal Street. To follow up, uh, my theme is to follow up what Scott Eichler said. The item on the agenda is to whether or not you're going to decide to put a request for a joint meeting, a joint concept review, on a city council, uh, agenda, and have it voted on in the public. And I think it definitely, if we talk about time is money, projects take years, and another month, if that's indeed how long it takes, is not really a big deal, when this should be a public decision. Let's go back to the time the gables were making their presentation, and I asked, how did this decision, how was this decision made? And there was a few minutes where nobody answered, nobody knows. And then the answer came out, well, somebody called and asked each of the individual members of the council and the planning commission whether or not they would like to have a joint meeting. I don't think that's the way we're supposed to do things, it's supposed to be transparent, so let's get it on the agenda, and then decide. But I don't think, uh, we, the discussion seems to have focused on whether or not joint concepts reviews are good, or bad, or needed. And that's not what's on the agenda. I think we should have another time to talk about that, because I agree with Scott. I think the planning commission has a separate identified duty, and when the parent organization sits with them and constant, and makes comments on, through a concept review, it takes away some of the authority and some of the, um, hmm, well, I guess the authority, but opportunity for council members to look at it in a, in a different way. And if they give feedback, and then the, um, the applicant comes back with a project, and eventually gets approved or not approved, if it's not approved, maybe they would say, well, if we had a joint meeting, we would have been able to answer the questions the city council asked. Uh, let's see, wait, I'm getting a little mixed up here. There's a reason why we have a separate planning commission, and it's separate from the city council. If you combine them both, then what's the reason to have a separate planning commission? They do a job, they're supposed to screen, they ask questions, they get different responses, they get a new project, and then it goes to another body. It's kind of like having a inspector general, you guys in the council are the inspector general. So I think, concept reviews, we ought to look at it, make it, and have it on another agenda. But definitely put the decision on a city council agenda as to whether one's going to occur. Thank you.
And I'd like to make a comment, and that is, and I'm, I'm going to start addressing this every time that I hear it, because what it does is it paints this council with a broad brush that I am not willing to accept. So, I would like to correct a statement. No one called me regarding a concept review joint meeting.
Never. Nor I.
Nor I.
That's three.
Never.
So when you paint us with that broad brush, one, it's not fair. Two, it's, no, you painted me with that broad brush, now you get to listen. I'm going to get back to the issue at hand. No, I'm not. Is there anyone else in the audience that, that would like to address this? Mr. Daddie? Oh, and I apologize. Councilmember?
Having sat through a number of these joint things, I, I would, I would ask that the council have joint meetings with their commissions for the purpose of interchange and having the council explain to the commissions what they expect, what the direction is, where they're going to go, where this city's going. When we have a third party there, you're going to have a third party that's going to be the developer? Again, I, I have to say that some of these prior speakers have got a point. Uh, I don't think it's fair to the applicant, I don't think it's fair to the commission. The council gets to do whatever it wants, because you're the commission and you set the rules. If it's fair to you, that's the way it's going to be. What I've heard for years from the commissions is lack of direction from the council. You can go ahead and beat me up in a second, you might be right, but that doesn't mean we haven't heard it from everybody. We don't know where they're going, we don't have this five-year plan, we don't have this thing, we don't seem to be in sync. And so, I'd really like you to take all your available time and meet with all your commissions, and have some really good discussions with them, and figure out which direction we're going in. But when we meet on the 25th together, uh, I would kind of like to keep it between the two bodies and not, and, and discuss an item and not have a bunch of other things going on. So with that, I would, would hope that, um, we could get something together, because you haven't had a visioning meeting for, what, three years since we did that one at the end, on the Saturday and Sunday? It's been three years now, hasn't it, at least? So I would hope you would have that with your commissions. Thank you.
And I'd like to address something Mr. Daddie just commented on. And that is, I just want to make sure that you're aware, the, the city council has established a policy of meeting with each commission to do exactly what you suggested.
Thank you.
And we've been doing it.
And we have been doing it. And we have been doing it. Christine Golden.
And this time, I am here as chair of the Arts Commission, and I want to thank all of you for the opportunity that you have given to us on an annual basis to meet with you and talk about our goals and our dreams. I want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to come before you with our budget requests. I want to thank you also for coming to the Arts Commission meetings because maybe the public is not aware that a city council member is assigned to come to every commission meeting so that we have someone that we can ask questions of during a commission meeting and rely on to make sure that we're following things exactly the way they should be followed. Of course, staff, Steve McClary, is also an incredible help in that, and I want to acknowledge that as well. So as a commission chair, I really have to take very mild umbrage at what Mr. Daddy has suggested because the Arts Commission is quite happy with the interaction between that commission at least and city council.
Thank you.
May I just make, in defense of Mr. Miley, can I take the hit for him? So when the council asked how that meeting had been scheduled, I said that a request had been made and that for efficiency purposes, we thought it was a good idea, so we polled the city council. But what I meant by that is that we polled the city council to see if they were available to meet with the planning commission on that specific date. And I think by the way I explained it to Mr. Miley, I misled him. So if there's a misunderstanding, I apologize to him and to you.
That's correct. I was asked if I had the time. That's all. It was scheduling. That was the only polling that was done. That's correct. It was only scheduling.
And I was asking if I was available for a joint meeting. Mr. Miley, would you like to speak again?
I would like to apologize to the city council. I misinterpreted what I heard. And please forgive me.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an opportunity since I gave you such a bad time there. Councilmember Laura?
Yes, and this is a question directed to staff and because I want to make sure that concept review processes are beneficial. And would, for example, the one with the Gables, did that, so if you could, if you could explain to me the role of the planning commission and if that project, for example, was to be approved or just hypothetically, the planning commission really liked that concept, would, if they were to approve it, would it technically then go to council for final approval or does it end in planning?
That particular one would go because it was a subdivision. So subdivision is a recommendation from the planning commission and approval by the council. But many projects are just a design review or a conditional use permit, and in those cases, it would only come to the council if one party or another appealed it.
And I just wanted to make sure that I understood that clear because I personally wouldn't want to make it cumbersome or if there's really no point to it. But that's, I guess that's how I interpreted the process, and I think that it would be appealing to the applicant if they chose to do a concept review for that, for that certain item because it's going to come before both bodies. I think that I do respect planning commission's decision very much so, and I, and I really base my decisions in terms of planning and that, those questions that they raise on their expertise, but I'm looking at the, at that project in a different way. And I, that's why I saw it beneficial. And in terms of what we're being asked today, I mean, that's really, like Bill Warwick said, I don't want to make it that formal. I didn't really have an issue how it was presented to us. So I'm not sure if I'd be for that process, putting it on the agenda before scheduling a concept review. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I think that it should just be decided and by the applicant himself if it's going to be come before the both bodies, so.
Madam Mayor. I guess the first thing we should, we should discuss is whether or not we're in favor of joint concept reviews in the first place. If we're not in favor of joint concept review, then it goes to the planning commission. The only time I can see it being beneficial is where it's going to come to us anyway because of either needing to have a subdivision map approved or something along that line, and that clearly would be something the applicant would probably want to have an idea from the council, what we thought of that idea. But I can tell you, in 10 years on the planning commission, I can't even think of one joint planning commission, city council, concept review. I'm sure there was one, but I just can't think of it. So if we, if we say the planning commission's only going to be the ones involved in the concept review, fine. If it's up to the applicant because it's going to come to the council anyway, then I see no reason for it to be on our agenda. I think we should try to streamline and make it easy for the applicant. And I don't have any idea, I can't imagine a concept review coming before me where the applicant is asking for a joint concept review and me saying no. Why would we do that? I mean, I can't imagine why we would, we would ever deny an applicant a joint concept review if they really asked for it.
May I approach him?
This is my point. I mean, if we're talking about a project of the scope of the Gables, it makes sense. If we're talking about a project, first of all, an applicant doesn't even have to go for a concept review, it's optional anyway. So I think we can leave it to our planning, community development project, and our city manager to know, this is a really big project, it's going to require a subdivision and all that, and it may behoove the applicant to ask for a concept review with both the planning and city council. But the majority of projects, there's no point. So we're putting this down as a potential, to be codified when we've already did do it with the Gables? I'm not sure we have to really do that. I think we could leave it to staff's discretion to see the scope of the project and if it eventually is going to call for a subdivision or something.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Clark's recommendation is, seems like a good one to me. If it's going to be a large enough project that involves a subdivision map, that would come before the council anyway, in that instance, I can see the benefits of a concept review as long as the applicant understands and the public understands that it is not acceptance or denial. It's the two bodies at one time giving feedback. You know, I don't like it because it's brown, you know, I don't like it because it's three stories. It's just concepts, it's just responses to someone asking, what do you think of this I think that should be very limited, and I would actually, I don't think it's necessary to even go to establish a policy. And I'll tell you how I feel about it personally. I have, we have a new business in town, and the owner has given me a call, because I am a council member, I'm the mayor, and has requested that we sit down and have a conversation about a project that he is, has not yet presented to the planning commission. Now, the reason that puts me in a difficult position is, one, he has every right to pick up the phone and call his elected representative and say, I want to chat. But the other side of that is, is he looking for approval for his project? So I do make these appointments, and I do keep the meetings, and I also say right up front, you will not get an acceptance or rejection from me. I am here because I'm your elected representative and I will listen to you. I feel the same way about this. I think it's a little invasive for the council to join the planning commission in a concept review. I think we, I do believe we have a strong planning commission. I think it represents a broad segment of our town, and I would rather not have joint meetings. Anyone else from, any other questions from council? Any other comments from the public? Counsel's pleasure.
Does Mr. Clark, uh, mayor?
Madam Mayor, does our city manager have enough direction at the current state?
No.
No?
Well, if you don't give me any other direction, then I guess I'll approach the mayor and ask the mayor, whoever it is at that time, whether we should schedule a joint meeting.
Based on how huge the project is, does it involve subdivisions?
Because the mayor has the ability to call a special meeting to the city council, so...
And if that is the case, then if it is going to be the question, should we have a joint meeting, I would rather see it on the agenda. So now we're right back to where I was in the beginning, which is, I think your recommendation is a, is a pretty good recommendation.
I guess, Madam Mayor, I've got a question that I don't quite understand. If the question is, should we have a special meeting? Where's that, who's asking that question? If the applicant wants a special meeting, why don't we just give it to the applicant? Who's asking whether we should have a special meeting? If the applicant requests it, then we have one. The applicant doesn't request it, then we don't have one.
Madam Mayor, I would even go as far as to see making sure that that meeting is appropriate and not just having any meeting just because they want to have a joint meeting with the council and planning commissioner or with the council and our commission. I think that it should be an appropriate meeting and leave that up to staff. I don't think we should put it on the agenda to see if it's appropriate and then come back. I just, it's like, I'm saying, but as Mr. Warwick, if, I don't want to make the process more cumbersome, so it's already pretty...
Okay, so if we decide not to follow Mr. Clark's recommendation, then where we are is Mr. Clark will give me a call and I get to make the decision all by myself.
Whoever is the mayor.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Miley?
Bill Miley. I think this has to do with public information and the public having something that they can see that will tell them that this is in the process of happening. So why not put it on the consent calendar? There's been a request for, and the council approves, and then you just consent it, say yes. At least we would be able to see it when we look at the agenda on the website. I guess it's important.
Madam Mayor, Bill, can I ask you a question? Because I'm, I'm not clear on, and I believe in transparency, but I'm unclear about this one. What is it, if, obviously, an applicant, any applicant can ask for a concept review before the planning commission, and they're going to get it. What is it that you want to see on our agenda that says that they've asked for, that they've asked for a joint meeting and you want to know whether we said okay or not? Because the applicant always can have a concept review, no matter what. So it's a matter of right for them to say, we want a concept review before the planning commission. I'm just not sure what, what coming on an agenda to us does to that process.
Concept reviews of the planning commission are great. That's really good. A concept review to the city council would be good. It's the issue of knowing that there's going to be a joint, that the applicant has asked for both parties, both groups to come together and have one presentation. I don't object to that. I just think it would be helpful, it would be important that the city council does make that decision that they're going to join the planning commission on a given day for this purpose and it be on the agenda so we can find out. Like when I came to the Gables, I didn't know anything about how, it took me a while to find out that the applicant asked for this. I didn't know that. Maybe it's because I came in late. But I'll put it under a consent calendar. Say, city council agrees to have a joint commission with the planning commission to review a presentation by ABC.
And Mr. Miley, before you sit down, I want to address another thing. We may be working at cross purposes here, I'm not certain. We posted the agenda for the special meeting in accordance with the law. Whether it's a special meeting, whether it's a joint special meeting, whether it's a regular council meeting, there are specific guidelines we have to follow. So our putting it on the window is all of the public notice required. But I understand that because, that's for a general rule, because no one has come before this council and said, we don't like the idea that you met with the planning commission just to discuss council goals and planning's goals. No one's been here to complain about that. So I think it's specifically when there is a project like the Gables. But otherwise, we meet all noticing requirements. Does that help?
I remember I used to come down and look at the door before we had a website.
I think that's why I said on the window out there.
Up and down, such a... Do I get the feeling that you don't want to acknowledge that you've agreed to have a meeting with the planning commission for a joint presentation?
You get the feeling I do not want to acknowledge that we, that I agree, could you say that again?
Do I get the feeling that the council doesn't, that members of the council would prefer not to have it on the agenda that says, we have been asked to have a joint meeting with the planning commission by this applicant, and we agreed to do it on June 30th?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, what I hear, what I'm hearing personally, is that away, a mechanism, channel, whatever we want to do, that when we have a special meeting, no matter what issue it is, maybe we should try to inform the public in other ways to make them aware of it quicker and not just abiding with the standards of the law to post that. That's what I'm hearing. And I feel like we can do that without putting it on the agenda, using maybe the website, just like Councilmember Blatch suggested last meeting about putting code enforcements up there or doing just creative things that are really cost-effective and just learning the public, oh, you might be interested in that, we might be having this special meeting, whatever it is. That's what I'm hearing. And I, I mean, I agree with that, but I don't think we need to go to the extent of putting it on the agenda and then, and then talking about that we're going to have it to have the meeting. I think that we could use whatever technology or media there is out there to inform the public that we're having this. And I think that's what I'm hearing. I don't think he's questioning the fact that we're trying to hide or have the secret meeting. I don't, I didn't, I didn't get that from Mr. Miley. And I don't know if that's what you meant.
Okay, now, listening to you, I got the idea that you were also advocating both sides.
No, in a way, it was.
Which leaves us...
Well, I feel, I feel like this, this, this is my explanation is why I don't think this is necessary, because I think there's other avenues to really inform the public that is more cost efficient, that's quicker, and that could get the job done. That's my personal, well, that's why I wouldn't want to go through this system like Mr. Wierich says, because he says, time is money, and council member Blatt said that too. So why not use our other, other options there is to inform the public that we're having a special meeting? Or, I mean, I don't see no harm in that.
Okay, this is, this is my understanding of where we are on this issue. At this point in time, this council supports the idea that if there is a circumstance where the applicant requests a joint meeting for a concept review between the planning commission and the city council, our city manager will call me and I get to say yes or no. That's my understanding of where we are at this point in time.
Or whoever the mayor is at the current.
Or whoever the mayor is. Is that where we want to leave it? I personally think Mr. Clark's recommendation is, is good, but I don't seem to be getting any.
Well, Madam Mayor, I guess that the, I mean, how does it hurt to put it on there? But if it's on the agenda, it's an action item. We've got to take an action on it. Well, how, if you give notice of a special meeting, you're giving notice of a special meeting. It's not an action item. You've, you're having a special meeting. Do we want every special meeting we're going to have on the consent calendar of our agenda? And then we can pull it and discuss it? No. I mean, I just think you give notice of your special meeting and you're done with it.
Exactly.
Okay. So we are, this is where we are as a council. And that is, if there is a special meeting for a concept review, the city manager contacts the mayor and the decision is made at that level. Is that correct?
No.
That's not correct.
The special meeting on concept review would be requested by the applicants.
No, no. Granted, but it would be requested of the city manager. The city manager would contact the mayor. The mayor would make the decision. That's where we are. Is that where you want to be?
So we're taking it out of the, we're taking it out of the hands of the applicant. They request a concept review and the city manager passes it to the mayor. They would also pass, this is a big project, it's going to involve a zoning change or this and that, therefore, I think we really should have a special meeting. Then the mayor would say, I agree. I could live with that, that's fine.
Have we turned this into a big mock?
Yeah.
If there are no more comments, let's move along.
Do you have enough to go on there?
Do, yes.
Yes, thank you.
More than enough.
Okay. Agenda item five, residency requirements for membership on city commissions. And just to remind the public, I reordered the agenda so that item two will, we will hear after we do item five, because the result of item five might impact two. That was confusing. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. You'll be glad to know I really don't have a staff report on this at all. This was a question that the council asked be put on the agenda for further discussion.
Let's wait just a moment for council member Clap to get back. And Rhonda, did you have anything you wanted to say on this? Did a council member ask that this be put on the agenda? If so, let's hear from that person.
I, I had asked that it be put back on. As you'll recall, a few months ago, I asked that it be put on, and unfortunately, it was something that was heard very late in the evening. Very few people, if any, were still at the meeting. And it kind of just, I didn't get any traction on my, my, my comments. But just to preface what I think we need to decide is that clearly the city council members have to be citizens of, of our city. And I think that there's some exception by citizens that people that live outside our city could be making vital decisions over things such as planning, building, that kind of thing. My emphasis on looking at it to say that it can only be citizens on our commissions really only applies to the planning commission and to the building appeals board. I think that those two have a dramatic effect on things that happen within our city, that I think it should be people that live within the city are the ones making the decision for the city. I don't have as much of a concern with park and recreations, because that's more of a valley-wide type of thing. I don't really have much concern with the arts commission, because we have extremely fine artists throughout our valley, and they're really not making decisions that affect our health and safety and things like that. And as well as our historic preservation commission, although that one, you know, I could probably go either way, because they are making decisions that affect aspects of historic preservation as to how things are landmarked and that kind of thing. But I think it's an important, it's an important topic. It came before the council the last time with few people in the audience. I'm happy that there's a lot more people here, because I'm very interested to hear what you have to say. So with that preface, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember.
And I second that. And I know the last time exactly, there wasn't that many people in the audience, but it's been brought up another time by a fellow council member, Clap, on just, on the process of the commission. And I just thought that, that it would be important to revisit, now seeing how important these decisions that are made at certain commissions could have on our community. And I think it was well worth a revisit and to see what, what the community says, because I really do think that, that we need to keep our choice within the city if we're going to be making impacts. And I know the last time I wasn't really for that, because I feel like being, including other people in the valley would be beneficial for the city. But I think that we have enough expertise in the city to pull from and, but again, I'm open to discussion, I'm open to ideas, but I think that we really need to hash out this, this concept right here and now and decide whether we want to be residents or non-residents.
Point.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Are you, are you? Councilman Lara, what councilman Blatt said was, in terms of the planning commission and the building appeals, are you talking about just those two or you're also talking about the arts commission, historic preservation?
I, I think that also the historical preservation has a pretty much a good impact on, on just the boundaries of Ojai. Whatever decision they make, it implicates just people that are living in the city. So I would, I would extend it to the historical preservation commission. Now, the parks and recs commission is pretty tricky and also the arts commission. I think there could be a gray line, but I could also see there being a benefit if it was all residents. And, and I, I could see that there could be, I guess, more of a, and this is where I find myself troubled, because I see how we impact the school district and are, it's so subjective that it's, it's hard to define. But at the same time, I mean, I, I wouldn't be against it being all residents for those commissions, because I think that sometimes decisions should come from your own citizens where you vote. So that's where I stand with the other two. But I think historical preservation should be included with, with the planning commission and with the appeals board.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and go to our public speakers before, I can see that we're getting into discussion here. And I think I'd like to hear from the public. William Wierich, you've been busy this evening.
Yes, you have. Again, my, my comments are completely structural, not with respect to criticism of, of the performance of any of the commissions or any of the people on the commissions. I just think we need to remind ourselves of the math. There's seven persons. Three could be outside, meaning three outside with one other person that's a resident is controlling majority. That troubles me if you don't, that means a majority of residents don't have to vote for something, for something that would impact residents, especially on the three that we're talking about here, most especially. So I think certainly it's worth considering that maybe that structurally is not a great position to be in, that you don't have to have a majority of residents voting for something that affects residents in order to, and also for the arts and parks and recs, I understand the, the point on that, and, but, you know, that doesn't mean it has to stay at three. It could also maybe be reduced to two, for example, in order to keep the broader participation without it being such a profound difference in terms of three plus one is majority. Thank you.
Christine Golden?
I feel like I've been busy tonight, too. Oh, well, I feel very passionate about this. And I guess I want to start by reminding Councilman Lara that the arts commission makes no decisions. We only recommend to city council. I would like to bring to mind and remind you that the beginning of the arts commission, the founding of it, and the first members on the arts commission included some very significant people who did not live within the city limits. For example, Gail Childress, who lives outside over by the Bacalles area, and others as well. We could go on and name and name and name, the number of people who got the arts commission on its feet and got it going and did not live within the city limits. I agree with Councilman Blatt's that arts are valley-wide and that we address at the commission valley-wide arts issues, even though we're looking always at those issues in terms of their benefit to the citizens of Ojai. We have a public school district in which many schools in that public school district lie without, lie with, outside of the boundaries of the city of Ojai. Can you imagine what City Gallery would look like if it were not for the work of Roger Conrad? Look around at the displays. Look at the invitational gallery in your hallways. Roger lives up on Suffer Mountain Road. Can you imagine what the condition of the public art ordinance would be if it were not for the constant diligence and brilliance of Susan Stinsmullian Amand, who lives a couple blocks, just a couple blocks, outside of city limits? So when you're looking at this issue, I hope it isn't one size fits all. I hope you can look separately at the planning commission and the building commission, because I'm in total agreement on those. And I have probably more to learn about the historic commission, but I probably would be in agreement somewhat there. But for the arts commission, please leave us as we are. We work really well and we need to have that broad spectrum of art that's covered. We need the experts in this town in the field of art. And some of them don't have homes in the city limits. They lie just outside, but we need them. So please, I hope that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Bob Daddy?
I always hate to follow her. Maybe what you can do is you can take a look and separate the three commissions that do have an effect, that do prohibit, that do absolutely stop building, a whole number of things that do inflict expenses. And take a look at those, separate those, study the other two and see what those merits are later, and, and get on with this. I've had a number of people ask. I think the building appeals board is the only board that mandates that everybody needs to be a citizen eligible to vote within the confines of Ojai, period. And I think it would be most appropriate for the planning commission and for the historic commission to fall into that same hospice. And what you do with the rec department and what the, what you do with the arts, I don't see where they have anywhere near as much impact. But I think if you're going to have people leveling taxes and leveling rules, they need to be able or should have to live under the exact same rules that they impose on the rest of the community. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Can I add something? No, let's move on. Let's move on. William Allrick?
William Allrick, Gridley Road. I want to, as I've appeared before you in support of this initiative, I want to thank you for its presence, no matter how it got here. It is egregious, as I've referenced before, that such an ostensibly powerful or influential organization would have people who are not subject to the same rules and laws that, which are applied to those who come before them, as well as those who live alongside of them, ostensibly. Having said that, I would also like to point out that I'd earlier also brought up the same sort of question relative to a policy, not a requirement, but a policy that the city would have relative to contract staff and employees. And when I, I think that was the, one of my first appearances before this body, and this body shifted right to Mr. Fletcher at that time and asked the question. And Mr. Fletcher responded with a statement that was actually consistent with an article in the state constitution, which is that a city cannot require employees be residents of the city. And I am not, I didn't address that in my question. My question was, is a matter of policy, an orientation by this body and the city to have those who are doing service for the city be residents of the city. Pretty simple. However, which I think is partly an issue that I have with how a staff may be, the term that comes to mind is, and I'm sure this would result in umbrage on your part, but staff is effectively managing elected officials by giving, withholding information or giving partial information. Because the balance of that citation, unless Mr. Fletcher didn't fully research it, which I doubt, was cities cannot require employees to be residents of the city, but can require them to reside within a reasonable and specific distance of their place of employment. My point being, this is a valley, as we've been hashing over the limits of where the interface zone is between the city and the, and the valley. And we are all part of a community in that regard. And having folks who work for this city be somewhat more close in residence than, for example, Ventura or other points in Ventura County or other counties, for example, Orange County, might be somewhat to the benefit of this community. Just a point of policy. Thank you.
That's all of the speaker cards I have. Anyone down?
It was about a year ago when I requested this come on the agenda. And my feeling at that time and still now is that the planning commission and, well, the Board of Appeals wasn't even in existence then, but I do think those are the two that should have all of the, the commission members living in the city where they are affecting laws in that city. I have, I think the arts commission and the parks and rec should, could have members outside of the city, because they, they are valley-wide and the arts commissioners in particular, many of them are, many of the finest artists in the, in the valley live outside the city. And I, I see a reason for them to be a little bit broader. I have mixed feelings about the, the historic preservation commission, because, and I don't know, but I, I think that if they designate a property to be historic, that the property owner has to agree to it. I don't think it's forced on them. So I'm not sure about that either. But the planning commission and the boards of appeal, those folks should all live in the city, because they affect the laws. Thank you.
Mr. Eicher, and then I'll let you finish up. Briefly, Christine, not you, Mr. Eicher.
I think that for the planning commission, there may be times when there are people who want to who want to serve on the Planning Commission, who have the capability of making proper decisions and the right background, but they can't serve because they live outside. And at that point, we're not necessarily getting the best representation we could possibly receive. And I understand that many people bridle at having someone who doesn't live here telling them how to live. But perhaps it would be... It could be expanded to either requiring residents or operating a business within the city limits. A number of the people who own and operate businesses within the city limits live just outside. A good number certainly live in Ventura, but there are some who live in Mermody, and those people have no say over what decisions are made that affect their ability to run their business. And so possibly restricting it to residents only is a little bit too strict, and that possibly opening it up to someone who owns or operates a business within the city limits might give us a broader group from which to choose. Just a suggestion.
Christine, one minute.
How about 10, 15 seconds? No, I just feel remiss that I didn't mention Barbara Hirsch, who's a current commissioner and again lives just outside the city up on Miners Road and who spearheaded the Arts Ojai Program at the Ojai Playhouse on second Saturday, who began the Artist/Student/Mentor Program, and although it's not an Arts Commission program, was... is extremely figurative in the art program at the hospital. So I just felt remiss because I forgot to mention Barbara, and I did want to do that.
Randy Hayney?
I'm going to order pizza.
Randy Hayney, Chair of the Recreation and Parks Commission. I don't know how you guys do it. I'm starving. Yeah. So I agree regarding the Recreation and Parks Commission. I couldn't tell you who is out of city and who's in city. We've got a great commission. Everyone works well together. It's just a... It's a good group. Having said that, I'd like to plant the seed that somewhere down the line, we're going to need a Recreation and Parks District, so that... Just like the school district, just so that we can include all of the patrons in participating and paying for the activities that the Ojai Recreation and Parks Department puts on. That's all I want to say regarding that. Thank you. And what do you guys want on your pizza?
More speakers? I would like to say something.
Does anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone who has not spoken? Okay, I'm taking... Bringing it back to council.
First of all, I think there... We need to clarify the roles of commissions. Commissions are advisory. The Historic Preservation, the Recreation, Art, and the Building Appeals Board are advisory. They are not in any capacity... Have no capacity to pass law. Excuse me. Their... That is their capacity, their advisory. And I want the best qualified, smartest people we can get from this valley to help educate me and advise me and help me through this process. We don't have staff as council members. This is kind of our quasi-staff, and it's really nice to have these people that are dedicated to this valley, be willing to donate their time to help educate us so we make the best job... The best decision possible in our jobs. And I don't want to cut ourselves short and shoot ourselves in the foot because we're being xenophobic about it. We're only four and a half square miles. It'd be one thing if we were 10, 15 square miles. We're four and a half lousy square miles. That's nothing. I used to think I wanted it all isolated within the city, but I've really changed my thinking on this because I've looked at the people on these commissions, and many of them don't serve in the city... I mean, live in the city, pardon me. And I think if we lost them, what a loss we would have. I can't even imagine. So as far as I'm concerned, if there's any place that we could maybe justify a change, it would be in the Planning Commission because they step beyond the advisory capacity. They do make more decisions that are more critical to what happens to the citizens. That, I think, we might benefit from having a shift. And I like Mr. Wyrick's suggestion of the shift to two rather than three, so you don't end up in that uncomfortable position of it being three people potentially that don't live in the city making that decision. Or if we make the transition, have it be through attrition. I don't want to kick somebody off because they don't happen to live in the city when they're doing these incredible jobs that they're doing right now. So again, I want to repeat, and then I'm done, that I want the best qualified people that care about this valley to help me do my job and do it better. And that it's divisive, and I just don't think it helps build community. I think it tears down community. And we need community more than ever in our world, and I don't want to jeopardize that by creating a system that discourages people from participating in our local government. We affect them just as they affect us, so I don't want to have that be forgotten.
And just a reminder, I believe the question before us is basically whether or not we want our commissions to be all city residents or some mix thereof.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Lara?
And good points from Councilmember Clapp, and definitely looking at this community because I... To start off, last time we talked about this when, at the time, it was Mayor Blatts who brought it up. I did feel that by limiting the commissions to residents only would discourage community, development, community, and just a culture of community. And there's a point that Councilmember Clapp made at the end. If we're affecting others in the community, to me, okay, we should think about our commissions. Who's really affecting other people outside the city limits? And I think the Planning Commission doesn't affect people outside the city limits. Maybe arts and maybe... And definitely arts, and let me rephrase that. Definitely arts and definitely the Parks and Recreation. They involve other agencies and allows us to work. And thinking about the Parks and Rec Commission, what my duties were and how often we had to... We wanted to contact Steve Bennin and et cetera for other questions. I think that's... Fits in that purview of that commission. But the Historical Commission, the most... The more I've been learning about it, the more I feel like it has impact on just properties on the city. And... Or are those... Or are those commissions also making decisions on properties outside the city limits? And that's why I feel like maybe we should include the Historical Preservation Commission just resident only for that reason. Not saying that they're not qualified, but I just feel like there's a difference. And when you live in Ojai and feel the impacts of the ordinance, it's true. You live it, you see it every day. And I feel like those three commissions really impact just our residents, just our citizens. And I don't think it's a question of discouraging community participation. I really don't. I think we should really be careful to throw that because it's just so simple to make an argument for it. I think that doesn't pertain to these three commissions, but the other two commissions, I could see us working with other agencies and other people, so.
Can I speak?
Would you mind one real quick thing, Carol? We pass the ordinance. Historic Preservation doesn't. They advise. We make the decision whether we want to or not, number one. And number two, the other thing is, you bet the Planning Commission has an impact on our neighbors. If that Cardi property got developed down there, who's right next to that Cardi property? Miners Oaks. You'd bet your bottom dollar they have an interest in that. So they can have just as much as an interest about what we have approved for development in this town as you or I. So there's a tremendous impact the Planning Commission does have. And let's not forget the difference between advisory and policymaking body. Just because Historic Pres says one thing doesn't mean the council has to do it. We are the ones that make the laws, not Historic Pres, not Recreation, not Arts, not Building Appeals, and not Planning, none of them. That we need to get that clear in our heads before we make any decision.
And I appreciate you commenting that because that's always been my thought, my process.
I'm going to hold the halt here because the next person that actually had the floor is Mayor Pro Tim Smith. So I'd like to hear her speak, and then we'll go back to this debate here.
What I'm hearing is there is a disagreement about the planning, perhaps Planning and Building Appeals. Arts Commission, two of the best books about the history of the Ojai Valley were written by people who are not residents. These are true historians. They love the Ojai Valley. There's no way that we would... Why would we want to limit ourselves to just people in the city, which is one-third of the population of the valley? One-third. Parks and Rec, two-thirds of the kids who apply there are county residents. Without them, we wouldn't even have programs. Wouldn't be enough kids. I think Parks and Rec should be all county. In fact, I think they all should be as they are, except maybe Planning. And in that case, we would have to limit Planning to only five members. We're not going to find seven members who are qualified. When I first came on council, I used to come to meetings, people on Plant... People would be appointed to Planning Commission, whether a city or county, and not based on whether they're an architect, whether they're a builder, whether they're a landscaper. People would just be on it, you know? I mean, we've come so far. We have such a terrific Planning Commission. If it's the council's pleasure by majority vote to go ahead and limit Planning Commission, I would suggest we bring it down to five because finding seven of the quality we now have, I think, will be very hard. And I agree with Councilwoman Clapp that we have quality people there. They love the Ojai Valley, and the final decision is up to us.
Okay. Which of you would like to go?
If I could... If I may, Madam Mayor. And I really appreciate that because I have been saying their decision and stuff, and I truly understand that their role is only advisory, so I really do appreciate that. And I'm not saying that our decisions that we make on certain properties won't have indirect effect on other adjacent communities, but the fact is that most of the decisions made are in the city, really only apply to residents. I'm not saying that any... We're not going to take into consideration issues as a valley. I'm not saying that, but I think that approaching it in a way of saying, okay, if we only limit to residential, there's... We're totally cutting off community participation. That's not what I'm saying. Anybody's, regardless of whether you live in Ventura or something, if you have an opinion that could potentially impact them, I think they'll come. But I don't think by just limiting to the residential will totally outlaw that part of the valley. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying... So just for clarity. But I do really appreciate your comments, Councilmember Clapp, because they could be construed and they could misinterpret what my message is, so I appreciate it. Yes, so definitely.
Councilmember Clapp? No additional comments? Councilmember Blatts?
Yeah, the... There's no question that we've had some excellent council... Excellent commissioners that haven't been residents of the city. I really think that what the Arts Commission has done, I mean, like I said, it's... I think it's fine, and I think that if the Arts Commission was limited to only Ojai residents, we would be sorely amiss. I really tend to believe that with the Historic Preservation Commission, too, only because they don't really involve themselves quite to the same extent as the Planning Commission. And when I think about the presentation that they gave to us last fall, where they had identified 32 properties within the valley, many of those properties were in the valley, not in the city. And I think that it's... That the knowledge of the Ojai Valley when it comes to our history and, you know, our past is probably pretty important, and I can think of a lot of people that you're kind of doing without if you didn't have them on the Historic Preservation Commission. But I feel pretty strongly about the Planning Commission, and that's not to say that we don't have excellent people on there, and there's excellent people that are on the commission now that don't live within the city. And whether we decide we're going to do it by moving it back to two instead of three or whether we, through attrition, go to all residents, but I just think that it makes so much more sense that if you're going to be given an up or down on a project, that the people giving you that up or down are people that live in your community and are governed by the same rules and regulations and laws and have voted the council in as the people that are asking for your approval. I just think it's really a much better way to go than somebody that potentially could deny your project living in Oakview, which is possible.
May I make a suggestion, Madam Mayor? Why don't we give like a straw vote to see or a vote, Arts Commission, keep as it is, Parks and Rec, keep as it is, et cetera, to see if people, number one, support... I, you know, I agree with what Councilman Blatt said, but I would also say, let's cut it down to five members, and they all have to be in the city for planning. I don't know if we would get seven, or maybe we would.
I think that's an excellent idea right after I make a comment. Okay. And that comment is, we tend to think... We have four commissions, five, well, a board. We tend to think that... Never mind that. Let me say it this way. Every commission, every advisory commission to the city impacts city residents and non-city residents. We just haven't paid attention to them. The Arts Commission distributes annual grants. Those recipients may be inside the city, they may be outside the city. It has been the council's direction that those grant recipients benefit residents of the city. But you see, so it isn't just the Planning Commission. Historic Preservation is the same way. We've just gone through issues with HPC. The Parks and Rec, yes, we serve as valleywide, but the fact is, we are only four and a half square miles. So what I'm... What I want to say is, every commission has an impact. Do we want to look at all the commissions tonight, or do we have a specific interest in the Planning Commission? Do we want to... Do we want to change all the commissions, or do we want to specifically address the Planning Commission?
Madam Mayor?
And now we come to a straw vote.
Oh, and I was going to say, I think we should go with the suggestion for Mayor Pro Tim Smith had.
Okay. Councilmember Lara?
After hearing what the public said and what my count... The council said is, I think that I could see the point of view of the Parks and Arts Commission leaving it at is maybe limiting to two people. That's a possibility. I'm not for or against that. And also the Historical Preservation, I'm still not fully convinced, but I could see how they could service countywide and how it could be beneficial to us. But in terms of planning, definitely I could see the benefit of just having them residential. So in Parks and Rec, just as is, I think we work with the people in the valley a lot in Parks and Recs, being on that commission before. I think it's benefit... It's beneficial to have input from the community, from the outside community. And Arts, I mean, it's good to have the chair here to hear her suggestions. So I guess in the Historical Preservation, it would be good for me to hear their suggestions too before just saying residential. But in the Planning Commission, I just feel like we do... They do have a lot of decisions that mostly affect our residents, and I just see it being beneficial, so I would be all for residents on the Planning Commission.
And I just want to clarify that tonight, you think our focus should be on the Planning Commission, whether it should be all residential... Commission, whether it should be all residential or the mix that we have. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I'm in agreement. Let's leave what we have as is, except for Planning Commission. And the question there is, of all city, is, is very reasonable. The question I have, do we need to keep it at seven people at that point?
Councilmember Blatts?
My comment is, we need to look at the Planning Commission and we need to leave it at seven people.
And the others leave as is?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Clapp?
Yeah, I think we should leave as is. And as far as the Planning Commission goes, I think it'd be nice to leave them at seven because you need to have attendance.
Okay. But what about, did you answer, and I could have missed it, did you answer the residency requirement for the Planning Commission?
Um.
Leave it as it is? Was that your?
No, no, no. The Planning Commission, I'm open to discussing changing it. I guess it would be how it would be done. Whether it be attrition, whether it be five, whether it be seven, whether it be two outside or whatever.
Okay. So, and I would agree with that. So it sounds like all of us are saying at this point in time, let's take a look at the Planning Commission and its makeup. All the other commissions remain?
Correct.
So where are we?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. Okay. I'll toss a question out there. And the question is, should the residency requirement for the Planning Commission be residents only, and should that be implemented through attrition? Councilmember Laura?
I mean, I think that would be the fairest way to, to do it, is, is from now on, new, new open, new vacant spots are open should be Sujus Residential. And I do think that we, we could easily get seven people to be appointed to the Planning Commission. I think there's people qualified in our, I know we say four point, two miles, but just not forget, there's over 3,000 something residents live in here. So I'm sure we could find seven Planning Commissioners well-qualified in there.
Okay. Leave it at seven and have all of the commissioners be residents through attrition or?
Yeah, through attrition.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I would be, I'm in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement with that. Mayor, Councilmember?
I'm in agreement with that as well, but I think that one other caveat ought to be, and I haven't been the liaison to the Planning Commission for a quarter, but we have seven, and I can't remember the last Planning Commission I attended that all seven were there. So I think that either through attrition or through participation, if, if a commissioner cannot be at the meetings, and particularly at the Planning Commission meetings, which's two a month, and that's, that's a burden on, on a volunteer. But I think that if, if we look at the attendance records of commissioners and they're not able to be there, then we should replace them.
A comment on that?
Council?
This has been done when we had the Redevelopment Commission and the Planning, we had to combine them. I was Mayor Pro Tem and, and Mayor was Sue Horgan, and that's just what we did. We took very much into effect a participation in meetings, attendance records, to make our final decision because it is a huge commitment. So I would be in agreement that the mayor, and perhaps the Mayor Pro Tem should at least on a yearly basis, take a look at what's their attendance looking like.
And I believe we, we directed staff to notify the council on attendances.
Good.
So we've, we've already done that.
Great.
And I think we need to have the staff, maybe?
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe we need to have staff draw, or bring to the attention, the attendance as well to the chair of the commission when there's a problem. You know what I mean?
Unless they're the problem.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Okay. So it, it sounds like at this point, we pretty much agree, well, we've, I'm not going to repeat it. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll try. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to begin work to appropriately, I think it's by ordinance, isn't it?
It is.
To bring back whatever is required in the form of a resolution to change our Planning Commission to affect only allowing residents of the city of Ojai to serve on that commission. And that anyone that's non-resident now will be allowed to particip-, will be allowed to remain on the Planning Commission until such time as they resign, or it's determined that their attendance records warrant them to be removed.
Or their term is up.
Well, I don't know about that. Do you want to have it as a term being up so that?
That's attrition.
Yeah, okay. Then when their term is up.
Madam Mayor, could I question, I'm starting here in the drafting part. If I could ask a couple of questions?
Do we have a second on this motion?
Oh.
Okay.
So currently the ordinance, currently, currently the ordinance also, it's, we're still at seven, is that correct?
Correct.
And the currently, the ordinance still requires that, that they have certain expertise also, and that's going to stay, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
In 2009, this section was amended, I mean, 2005, this section was amended to basically end all terms on December 21, 2005. And then new appointments were made.
And that was because the Redevelopment Agency was dissolved.
Okay.
Not the Redevelopment Agent, Redevelopment Commission.
Redevelopment Commission was dissolved.
So, yeah, so, so three members were appointed whose terms expire on December '07, and then four more were, so some got two-year terms, some got four-year terms.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to clarify what you're asking for, is that, is that we will have a requirement that for persons to be appointed, to qualify as, to be appointed to the Planning Commission, from and after the date of this ordinance, they must be a resident of the city. And so I think we do that, that means that when these terms expire, or they're otherwise removed, of course, then, then they must qualify as a resident. One other question I want to clarify, it's very common, that also means if someone loses their residency, they are deemed to have immediately resigned the commission without any action of the city council. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just like the council?
And what we have now is, even with the, the balance of four residents, three non-residents, if, if a resident moved outside, which would throw that balance off, then that resident would be removed.
Okay.
For clarification, how long are the terms?
They're also four-year terms. So some have just been appointed for new four-year terms. So those, if those persons are not currently residents, they're feeling a non-residency, they may continue for four more years before they.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda.
Artistic statement.
I'm going to go back to item two, which is, which is appointments to the Art Commission. The reason that I rearranged the agenda is, well, you'll know in a moment. We interviewed, well, Mayor Pro Tem Smith and I interviewed five applicants for the Arts Commission. That included one applicant, whose term had ended. They were very good applicants. One did withdraw after, after she realized the amount of work that would be involved. And so, oh, and I'm sorry, Christine Golden also joined us in the interviews as, as-
Yes.
Chair of the Arts Commission. Getting tired, it's not even 10 o'clock. And so the subcommittee decided to recommend the reappointment of Barbara Hirsch for another term. She is a non-resident. And to recommend the appointment of Heather Strobo.
Stobo, no more.
Stobo. And she is a resident of the city of Ojai.
Yeah.
And you have her application in your packet, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can I talk a little about the applicants?
Sure. Yeah, we had a terrific bunch of applicants, but we were particularly struck by Heather, number one, because not only did she have a gallery in town, but she also is a working artist. And I hate to say, but she's young, you know? She's like, it's kind of, kind of nice to see different ages represented. So, and she lives in the city, which was terrific. And did everybody get a copy of her, her resume?
Yes.
And as I said, it was Carlin and I and Christine Golden. And it was interesting how, when it came after all these residents, we all sort of, either had the first or second applicant as the first and second applicant. So it was how much we saw in, in Ms. Stobo. So we're looking forward to her accepting this, and I think she'll be a terrific addition to the Arts Commission.
And-
Not here.
Just to expand a little bit, she's had, she's been involved in the arts for 25 years. Her experience includes teaching, exhibiting, installing art, both public and private institutions. So she's, she's, will be very valuable, I believe. And Christine, would you like to say something about Barbara Hirsch?
Oh, what can you say about Barbara?
Thank goodness that she reapplied. And you, and I, you don't have to worry about the speaker card for this because you and Carol said what I was going to say about Heather Stobo. We're, we're absolutely delighted to have Heather recommended to you, and we hope that you approve her. And she is younger. Carol noted that. And that was one of the things that when I asked my fellow commissioners to give me some direction on what we should be looking for, that was mentioned by more than one commissioner. I guess we are all really showing our age, those of us that have been there for a while. So we're, we're so excited that Commissioner Hirsch has decided to continue with us for another couple of years. She's absolutely invaluable. As I mentioned before, she has spearheaded so many new projects and ideas, the Student Artist Mentor Program, spearheading the R21 showings at the theater on second Saturdays. And in, in the way she does, she's come up with yet another idea and also reminded us that we have to write our five-year goal. So Barbara's invaluable. Is it okay at this time, Mayor Strobo, if I ask the council a question?
All right.
That is related to this and yet a little off, but, and, well, the question is, when this has all come up, we realize that we're on some kind of a revolving door with interviewing and re-interviewing for reappointments because it's every two years. It's like it's happening all the time. Every time we turn around, one of us is being asked, you know, are you going to reapply? Is there any possibility to extend the term for art commissioners to three years or four years? So I just want to put that out there. We talked about it, a few of us at the Arts Commission, we haven't really put that on one of our agendas, but I don't know if it's even possible to do it. So my question is, can, is this something we can talk about and then bring back to you?
No, it's not something we can talk about tonight.
Okay.
It's not an agendized-
But I mean, can the Arts Commission talk about it?
If it's on their agenda.
If it's on your agenda.
Okay. So we can have that. All right. I wasn't sure if it's possible even.
But I, how about if it, after it's placed on the Arts Commission agenda, then you send your recommendation to council?
Okay.
Okay.
Will do. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody wants to know?
Nope.
Okay. Oh, I do want to say one more thing. We had five applicants, and I think that's kind of a record for Arts Commission. And so I'm especially excited about that. They were all outstanding applicants, every single one of them. The choice was easy and yet not easy. I mean, we had, you know, it could have been any one of them. And one of the goals I had coming on the Arts Commission was to let people know that there is an Arts Commission. So I kind of feel like did that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments, questions from anyone on council? In that case, I will move to reappoint Barbara Hirsch and appoint Heather Stobo to the Arts Commission for a term of two years.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Have to go back to my agenda because I, okay. The next item is the City Council Goals and Priorities Staff Work Plan. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Back on February 18th, we had a workshop at which the City Council articulated a number of goals, all of which are listed in the staff report. And they're not listed in any particular order in terms of priority. But you did ask me to come back with a work plan explaining how we would accomplish those goals and over what timeframe. And so I've done that in two ways. One is to put together a bar chart that shows each of the tasks and when I think it would start and how long I think it would take to complete. And I entitled this, "The Most Optimistic Schedule."
Most.
Yeah. And the reason for-
Doing it all at once.
Yeah. And that, part of the, part of it's because we're doing it all at once. But part of it is that I found that even what appears to be a simple ordinance, if we, if we're able to put together a simple ordinance and get it approved within six months, we're really cooking. Typically, it takes a lot longer because there's a lot of discourse between the council and the public and the commissions that are involved, which I think is a good thing. But that does draw out the schedule and make it take longer. So this is a very optimistic schedule, and it's really showing you the best possible scenario for each of these different projects. I also put together a status report document which lists the project, a little bit more of a description, the current status, and then the upcoming steps, most of which are already scheduled. And this is something that I can update for you periodically and bring back to you so that you will see how these things track and where we are with them, and which ones are complete, which ones have further steps to go through. So this is just a proposal. You know, if there's things that you'd like to see handled differently, we're certainly open to that. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Does council have questions for staff?
I did. The use of consultants, policy funding recruitment. Our, which particular department would you say uses, has, uses the most consultants?
So I think, I think that this goal really had more to do with the Community Development Department than any other department.
More to do with what?
The Community Development Department.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And so, and so I do plan on having a staff report for you at the next City Council meeting discussing that. But really, the cost implications are so great that I don't think you'll make a final decision on how to staff that department until the budget occurs. And then I think that once that decision's made, it's going to take a period of time to either recruit individuals or to secure consultants by RFP.
I have another question, sort of that, Community Development is a big department, but are there occasional employees that are hired who can cross departments?
There, there are. I'm not sure I see any benefit to that in this particular situation. However, it is true that some engineering services are provided by the Public Works Director/City Engineer to the Community Development Department-
Okay.
... when there are projects that require those services.
Any other members of council have questions for staff?
I have a little question. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask it, but under transit rentals, there's, it says council, pardon me, should have a workshop with the Visitors Bureau and the Board of Realtors for developing an ordinance. I think it's also important to reach out to the community because the transit rentals are most likely going to be in residential neighborhoods. So it seems to me that neighborhoods will be directly affected by the transient nature of these businesses. So it seems to me that neighborhoods will be directly affected by the transient nature of these businesses, so they should be also included in any sort of workshops. And I don't know how, whether it be through direct mail or whatever.
Yeah, I have one card from the public, William Warwick.
Mayor, members of the council, I just had a couple of comments. One is I really appreciated seeing in the work plan on Waterwise Landscaping Development Ordinance to simplify compliance with state requirements. I think that's so important, not just with the landscape ordinance, but in general, that, and I'm not sure it'd be a specific thing in terms of the work plan, but I just think, I really like to see that emphasis on enforceability, practicality, tractability. We all know that many, not many, there are ordinances that one, all we could all name that are not being enforced for one reason or another. You just mentioned the vacation rental issue, hard to enforce. Thought needs to be given to how to enforce the intent, rather than just the intent, is what I'm trying to say. So I think that's something that requires special attention in terms of changing things, and also looking at just the current situation, because it's just, you know, bad practice in general. People say, well, look, it's on the books, it's on the ordinance. Say, well, yeah, but we just can't enforce that. It's something that needs to be looked at and thought about. And then I really like the idea, I believe that the city manager mentioned, about combining visioning and goals with roadmap to sustainability. Again, I think that's a good idea of combining that. And anytime there's an RFP put out, like for the visioning and goals, I really appreciate the fact that it looks like the city council's going to review that RFP before it goes out, and that should definitely be the case. So those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warwick. Any other, any comments from council?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Counselor Laura.
I do have a comment, and I too appreciate you creating this report and this bar chart because I am a visual person, and I love to see how it all, and also you mentioning which departments are responsible for which items. One thing that I, one thing that I do have a question on is the neighborhood planning. And I know that we're talking about certain things that overlap, and I just worry that we're working backwards. For example, for, just take the building height. Are we, wouldn't it be including different neighborhoods when we talk about that? Or are we having the discussion before doing, it's like, how do we incorporate? I just don't want to, I want to make sure we're not doing double the work. That's my only concern with that, and, but I just want to make, or is it going to be addressed when we talk about vision and goals, or?
Well, the building heights ordinance is in progress already, and we've had a number of council and commission hearings on it. So it's before the commission, and I presume that fairly soon the commission will make a recommendation to the city council, and it'll, and it'll be up, you know, a drafted ordinance will be available for you to adopt. So it's already pretty far down the line. We've been working on it for about nine months.
All right. Well, I mean, I understand what stage it's on. So my question being, maybe would it be better to start talking about neighborhood planning sooner?
Well, the neighborhood planning is pretty much governed by the fact that we applied for a grant, and the determination as to how intense our planning efforts going to be is incumbent on the outcome of that grant. So we'll know in May. The grant's just been submitted recently. We'll know in May whether we have the grant, and we could have a fairly intense neighborhood planning project, or we don't, and we can have a sort of first step type of neighborhood planning process.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Thank you. I don't know if any of you have ever gone to areas or parks where they have all this wonderful outdoor fitness equipment, not for kids, but actually for adults. Anyway, I came, my husband came across a website showing some of this, and I'm going to pass it on to Sophocles and see if he would be interested in presenting it to Parks and Rec. But I think we're missing certain opportunities to increase the fitness of our residents. While they're watching the kids, they also can be doing various exercise. Because they're really all over the world. I've seen them in so many parks. So I'll pass that on, but I think that would be a wonderful addition to our parks. That's it.
Any other comments? So Mr. Clark? Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to convene as a city council? No, we're going to adjourn as a city council. Convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. We have a consent calendar. Any motions?
To approve?
Okay, roll call. Clapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobo?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to adjourn as the Redevelopment Successor Agency and reconvene as the city council. Any reports from council members?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a couple of comments. I really appreciate the commission, the chair of the commission's coming, beginning, because I miss that. I miss being informed what's going on. Even though they're televised now, I feel it's important to actually have some type of relationship with our commission, and it's something that the previous council before me instituted, and I thought it was a great idea. So I'm glad that we had two chairs coming. I'm hoping that the planning and the historical preservation chairs could come next time. Also, just thinking about my responsibilities and as a council member, I felt like I was, I didn't know, and I talked to Mr. Clark about it, what's the best option about reporting with my boards that I'm the liaison to? Because I feel like there's a lot of stuff presented that could benefit our community, like Economic Collaborative, no, Economical Development Collaborative of Intera County. For example, talks about offering small business opportunity loans. And I guess last year, when I first started with that board, I think we only had like four businesses applying, take advantage of their services. This year, I think we had 12 or 14 here in Ojai, take advantage of their services. And I think that, I don't know what the best approach is on informing, informing my fellow council members or the community of these opportunities and these services that could be taken advantage of. But I guess this is a forum, so I feel like I should inform you. And also, OBGMA, I was the alternate because my council member, Clapp, the, directly is on, couldn't be there. And just learning so much from that board, and learning why they recommended us to approve of the well and what it does to our basin. I mean, valuable information that's being, that we're being part of. I just thought that, I don't know if this would be the appropriate forum to go because our meetings are pretty lengthy. So I don't know if we should find a different mechanism to deliver that.
No, I think this is the proper place. So keep going.
Yeah, and that's basically, all I have to report on is basically on those two boards, and I appreciate the commissioner's report, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I just have a suggestion. If you have like applications from one of your committee, or like, for instance, if Councilman Blas has Gold Coast information about a new bus route or whatever, this is the proper time to tell us or to give, to render whatever, applications or paperwork that our citizens would have available to fill out. So this is correct.
Okay.
Any other council members? No reports? Mr. Clark?
I just wanted to mention that the Rhino Reform Committee is meeting this Thursday. And in reviewing the staff recommendation from the SCAG staff, it's really quite disappointing. It doesn't look to me like they're serious about making reform. They're kind of kicking the can down the road and saying, well, let's make overarching principles in the year 2018 when the sixth cycle comes up, not now, when we have a reform committee that's supposed to do that. So I'll be making that point at the meeting, and it'll be interesting to see how well-received it is.
Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Kennedy, Chief Kennedy, sir? Nothing. Susie, Greg?
I'll be glad to say something quickly, and that is that primarily last, was a week and a half ago already, we had a big storm, a seven-inch storm, and that was a boomer. And it was interesting because this year, we didn't have a chance for early storms to flush out the leaves and everything. So we had a lot of the oak leaves that, with the new storm grates, they're required to have these really tight gaps in them for high heels and for bicycle tires, right? So all, when you get a big flush like that, all the live oak leaves make it down, and they actually clog the storm drain grates if we don't have curb cut next to it, and a lot of them do have that. So our crews were running pretty harried, trying to keep up and keeping those grates clean. But we didn't have any flooding issues. That was good. We did have two trees that went down. So another two trees, besides the drought knocking them out, the heavy rains are knocking them out. So we're having our time with the trees. And separately beyond that, I just want to mention that we are getting ready. It's already just about time for the Ojai Valley Tennis Tournament. So we're out reworking all the bleachers out there, and the crews, a lot of, I think about $3,000 worth of wood is being replaced this year, which is actually down, it keeps on a downward trend because we're using pressure-treated wood. So that's it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing to report.
Madam Mayor, real quickly?
Sure.
About the leaves in the streets, it's one of the things that I've felt concerned about for quite a while is that our streets aren't really getting swept. And if they really were getting swept, it would probably be at least a little bit of relief on the storm drains if they really required that people moved their cars.
That's it. Any further business? Meeting adjourned.